Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 18th Concurrent Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council and the Public Facilities Financing Authority. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council Chamber, and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. As a courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live remote oral public comment via the city Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted, and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. Members of the public desiring to provide comments at the meeting are encouraged to attend the meeting in person. We require that all in-person attendees wear masks, consistent with the Contra Costa County health orders. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda titled "Public Communications," which is for public comments for items not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting if necessary. This process is consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook and will allow for all public comments to be received during the meeting for items not on the agenda. When I open the public comment period, please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only, which will alert staff that you have a public comment you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raised hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. If you are attending in person, please complete a speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. Wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. Please note that in-person public comments will be taken before any remote public comments. Please also keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various items during our meetings, and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID and password are: webinar ID 84552614447, passcode 107407. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to view this meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways: YouTube Live, view the City of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel; cable broadcast, Comcast Channel 28 and Incorporated Walnut Creek; Rossmore Channel 26; Wave Channel 29; and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You can also livestream online on the City of Walnut Creek's website. At this time, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Darling?
Here.
Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Here.
Mayor Francois?
Here. Next on the agenda is a presentation from Recycle Smart on SB 1383, Organics Recycling. I invite Judith Silver, Senior Waste Prevention and Recycling Manager with Recycle Smart, to provide the presentation.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Hi Judith, nice to see you.
Hi, nice to see you too. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm pleased to be presenting information about SB 1383. Thank you very much for inviting me. I am the Senior Program Manager at Recycle Smart. Next slide, please. SB 1383 is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the last 30 years, establishing targets to reduce, to achieve a 75% reduction of statewide disposal of organic waste from 2014 levels by 2025. The law also includes a goal of not less than 20% of currently disposed edible food to be recovered for human consumption by 2025. As you can see from this slide, food waste alone represents about 18% of what is thrown away in California each year, and focusing on getting organics out of the landfill makes sense from a waste diversion perspective as well as a greenhouse gas emission perspective. Next slide, please. SB 1383 places obligations on local governments, facilities, and generators. The Recycle Smart Board adopted the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction ordinance at its December 9, 2021 meeting, and the member agencies individually do not need to adopt this ordinance by reference. The ordinance compels generators to separate organics and to keep them from landfill. It also gives our agency the ability to request information and records to meet our reporting obligations to the state. The next few slides lay out the responsibilities of Recycle Smart, the member agencies, and the generators, but before continuing, I just want to convey that in almost all areas of the law, Recycle Smart and the member agencies are already compliant. Okay, let's turn our attention to the generator responsibilities. Next slide, please. The cornerstone of the law is the requirement that all generators, multifamily tenants, commercial businesses, residents, students, townhomes, everyone, has a program in place to separate organics from landfill. And through our agency's franchise with Republic Services, we already have that.
Hold on just a second Judith. There we go. We had a little delay in your slides advancing. I think we're with you now.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. So to say that again, the cornerstone of the law is the requirement that all generators have an organics program in place, and that our agency's franchise with Republic Services makes that true right now. And our carts are even the right colors, which is very helpful. 1383 describes specific actions that our generators must comply with, such as separation of organics for diversion from landfill, and annual education of tenants and employees, and participation of certain businesses in food recovery. With this law, multifamily tenants must also separate food scraps and food soil paper. Until now, multifamily tenants could opt out of this, and we're only required to have a program for yard trimming, so that's a big change. And the ordinance gives our agency the right to inspect generators and to verify if they are in compliance, and the right to enforce upon them, in fact, the obligation to enforce upon them, beginning in 2024 if they are not. Next slide, please. Turning our focus back to the Recycle Smart responsibilities, thanks to the foresight of our board over the last decade, we are in compliance with the existing collection approach that we already have, and which is paid for through our rates and executed by our service partners, Republic Services and Mount Diablo Recycling. Compared to many jurisdictions in California who require to implement costly new programs, we are in a much better position. I also want to mention here that in the most recent state budget, funding to be administered by Cal Recycle through a block grant to assist local governments with implementation of 1383 has been made available, and Recycle Smart staff, me, us, we are working on the application now for this block grant funding, and it's due February 1st. And this funding will help pay for program costs related to 1383 over the next few years. Next slide, please. SB 1383 gives us the right to issue waivers to commercial businesses if they generate less than 10 gallons of organics each week. This won't apply to many businesses, but it will give relief to some, such as non-food-oriented businesses, such as nail salons or plumbing, small plumbing businesses, those types of places. Next slide, please. Recycle Smart is required to educate each year about proper separation of materials and why it's important to do the separation, and this includes promoting food waste prevention and working with our commercial accounts to give them the tools they need to educate their tenants and employees, which they are required to do in this law. And we are preparing outreach collateral, such as signage, educational videos, and other technical assistance. Next slide, please. 1383 requires that we do an analysis of our ability to handle the organics that we are recovering, both for processing of organics, this is covered through our franchise, and also for handling recovered edible food. We share this information with the county, all the jurisdictions in the county need to do this, and then the county will convey this information up to the state. Next slide, please. SB 1383 requires annual route auditing, including providing feedback to generators if we find contamination. And we can do this curbside by looking at an adequate number of accounts on each route each year, or by doing waste evaluations or characterizations of collected loads. And we have been working with, we've been working with a contractor to develop a route contamination protocol that we're going to be testing in February, so that's very exciting. And we will then expand the pilot to cover the whole service area, every account, every route, excuse me, all 68 routes need to be looked at each year. Next slide, please. So to recap, we have adopted the mandatory organics reduction ordinance here at our agency, and for the next two years, we will further push education to all of our generators about how to separate organics and why it's necessary and important to do so. And then in 2024, we will be obliged to issue notices of violations or even fines. And since our service area is already used to having these services, we will be pushing education outreach over the next few years. We are hoping not to have much in the way of enforcement come 2024. However, obviously, since we are required to issue notices of violation if we find contamination, we need to understand who is and isn't doing a good job of separating organics, and that's where those annual route audits come in. Next slide, please. SB 1383 is very prescriptive about how to keep records and all the things that we have to tell the state that we're doing. And we are working with staff at each member agency to be sure that we have the right records for paper purchases, that we have to keep track of beginning now. And I'll touch more on how Walnut Creek is preparing to manage record keeping in a few moments. Next slide, please. One of the most interesting aspects of 1383 is our obligation to engage in food recovery and food rescue, and staff has been hard at work developing these relationships over the last few years. Covered food generators must have a contract with a food recovery organization to rescue excess food. We are working with Contra Costa Environmental Health to explore how they might assist with the monitoring of these covered food generators, and monitoring is a requirement of 1383. Next slide, please. This slide shows the various types of businesses that are considered either a Tier 1 or a Tier 2, and I'll show you more information about who qualifies and what the thresholds are on the next slide. So can we move to the next slide? So this slide shows the thresholds for the various types of businesses to be considered a Tier 1 or a Tier 2. In our service area overall, not just Walnut Creek, but for the whole service area, we have about 30 Tier 1 businesses and about 80 Tier 2 businesses, and I'll show you who they are for you in the next slide. Next slide, please. So here are our Tier 1s for Walnut Creek, and mostly all of these businesses, large supermarkets and grocery stores, are already involved in food recovery, but they may not be donating everything that they could be, so that's an improvement we can work on. And they may not have a service agreement in place, so that's another piece that we need to help them get in order to be compliant. Next slide, please. Here are the Walnut Creek Tier 2 businesses. So you will see restaurants based on size, if they have 250 seats or more, or hotels based on number of rooms, if they have 200 or more rooms at the hotel, or hospitals based on number of beds, if they have 100 beds or more, they are required to participate in this edible food recovery program. Next slide, please. Lastly, all public schools are required to participate. And what we've learned since the December 9 presentation is that private and parochial schools are not considered local education agencies and are therefore exempt from this requirement. So that was news, and that changes our list slightly. However, if a private or parochial school, for example, has 250 seats in its cafeteria, then it would be required to participate in the law, so there still might be some that are covered. We're working hard with our school contractor, Ruth Abbe and Associates, and with our edible food recovery partner, White Pony Express, to help all the public schools in Walnut Creek and in the whole service area have these service agreements and participate. Again, not until 2024 is this required for the Tier 2s, but we're certainly eager to get them going, and beginning to educate them is a requirement beginning now. So, next slide, please. So in terms of Walnut Creek specifically, you have some responsibilities that the agency does not cover. You are well compliant with your Cal Green and have had your Welo in place since 2016, so those are two great things that you guys can check off your to-do list. And then in terms of procurement, we have a paper procurement, so now all paper purchased by the city needs to be purchased, have recycle content in it. And it's great to have Emily and the Public Works Department working so closely with us, super supportive and helpful. They've been working to develop a system to code recycled paper purchases and track invoices through Munis. And budget liaisons were given a heads-up about this in the early part of January, and staff will be working to roll out these new procedures for tracking recycle content paper purchases, you know, going forward. Next slide, please. And the other big concern that has definitely been something we've been trying to work on for the member agencies is the organic waste product procurement conundrum. And as was unveiled at our December 9 board meeting, our executive director, in partnership with Republic Services, has come up with an approach to address this obligation for Walnut Creek and for all the member agencies, and Walnut Creek has confirmed its desire to participate in this approach. And basically, Walnut Creek is required to purchase over 3,300 tons of compost each year, about a $200,000 value, and through this approach, you will not need to do that. So that's a great fix. Last, next slide, please. So just to say that now that the law is live, Cal Recycle has the right to enforce on all local jurisdictions, both on Recycle Smart and on Walnut Creek directly. However, it is our firm belief that we are doing our jobs as we are doing our jobs correctly. It's extremely unlikely, given the position of our agency and of Walnut Creek of being highly compliant with so many aspects of this law. So, last slide. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, do we have any questions for Judith? Thank you, Judith.
Sure.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Happy New Year, happy 1383, I guess. So we've been working on getting ready for this for a while.
Yeah, it's kind of exciting, I guess.
Exactly. So just to clarify, excess food that now has to be recycled from the food generators, this doesn't mean the food that got served to me on a plate. This means the food that is not used in the kitchen and would otherwise go into the trash needs to go now be recovered so it can go into the consumption stream, not the organic waste stream.
Yes, that's absolutely correct, yes. So the organic diversion programs we have, either the Recycling Food Project, which sends diverted food scraps, and plate scrape is what I would call what you were just referring to, to East Bay Mud, that continues on. So the food that is either unserved, that was kept at the right temperature, that can safely be conveyed to a hungry person, that's the food that we're looking for, certainly not food that was served. So sometimes if you have, you know, at an Embassy Suites, and you have a tray of food that was going to be part of their breakfast buffet, but it never got served in its entirety and was kept at the right temperature, that's the type of recovered food that we will be looking for.
And my second question has to do with the grant programs. I had to speak to it 10 days ago down in LA, where they're not anywhere near ready to go as much as we have been here in central Contra Costa. But as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, that this first round of grants is basically $20,000 per jurisdiction. Is that what you're understanding?
So that is the minimum that's available to each jurisdiction, but we were given a spreadsheet by Cal Recycle that has more nuanced dollars in it, so it's actually based on population, and we were directed to actually apply for the amount in that spreadsheet. So the Walnut Creek amount is closer to 90,000, and agency-wide, it's about 235,000 that we're going to be able to.
Are we able to aggregate the entire population of the service area for Recycle Smart to apply for a single application for that grant of that amount?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. That's all I wanted to say, which was, don't just apply for $20,000.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Judith? I just want to say, on behalf of all of us, thank you very much for the hard work that you're doing, that your staff's doing on this really groundbreaking legislation. I think it's kind of the biggest thing since recycling laws went into effect in the 80s, and for putting our central Contra Costa in a very good place in terms of being able to comply. In my household, we've been doing this for years now, and I think a lot of the communities, a lot of my fellow residents are doing the same thing. So thank you for the hard work, and look forward to seeing the success of the program.
Thank you. Thanks for all your leadership.
Take care, have a good evening, Judith.
You too.
Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion? Councilmember Wilk?
I do, I'd like to pull Item 2I.
Any other council members? Not seeing any. Does any member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent calendar? Please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only if you would like to provide a comment on the consent calendar. For those who desire to provide public comment on consent calendar item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I will ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments. Please note that in-person comments will be accepted prior to remote comments. So if there's anyone in the chamber that would like to provide a comment on a consent calendar item, please approach the lectern now.
You might want to emphasize that the consent calendar is not the buffer zone.
Yes, and as a reminder, the consent calendar does not include consideration of the buffer zone, that is a public hearing item or public consideration item number five. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in the chamber. Anyone on Zoom, Suzy?
We have one hand raised, Carol Weed.
Okay, please bring Carol in.
I have a comment on Item C, as in City Council. Is that, I can make the comment now, or do I ask you to pull it and make the comment later?
So this is Item 2C, Carol, the investment policy?
Correct.
Well, go ahead and pull that item, and you can make your comment now.
Thank you. I noticed that the policy is much the same as it has been in the past. This is the fourth year that a group of us have made, and I've written, and now I'm making a verbal plea again, to have a component of the investment policy be similar to several other cities that have excluding, excludes investments in financial institutions that support fossil fuels. So infrastructure and exploration of fossil fuels is not included among the investment of several other cities, more so each year. This is the fourth year that we've made this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Why don't we, unless there are any clarifying questions of council members, why don't we have, if there's a motion on all items except for Item I, I would entertain that.
Move to adopt the consent calendar items 2A through H and J and K.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and then Item 2I is authorization of the city manager to approve a master consulting services agreement with the Nichols Group in an amount not to exceed $750,000 in a task order for the first phase of Boundary Oak Golf Course Driving Range Design at $255,893.
Right, well, I'll start it off, and I see Kevin Safin there. My question really was in regards to understanding more about the consulting services portion of this, which for the design could be up to $750,000. And I had some questions yesterday, and I got some responses on that, but understanding that we're talking about the construction, well, the design and construction of the Boundary Oak Driving Range, which could be then about $2.5 million. I use the driving range about every few months. There are people I know that use it every week, and even more frequently than that. And we all stand in the same general area, and we hit the ball, and we want to see how far it goes. So I'd like to understand more about why it's 3/4 of a million dollars to design something that does need to have a facelift. Granted, it's brown and a little bit dusty, I get that, but why can't we just lay some turf? Why can't we do something that's more of a ground cover? Why are we spending that kind of money where we're also going to potentially need financing to cover the construction costs when it actually comes to that?
Thank you for the record, Kevin Safin, Director of Arts and Recreation. Appreciate the question. So the ask for counsel is twofold tonight. One is for a specific payment or commitment of funds for the first phase of this project, which is the $255,000 related to the actual design of the driving range. The second ask is for a $750,000 master services agreement. The second ask is for a $750,000 master services agreement, of which the 255 would come from that. Let me talk about the driving range. The entire operation at Boundary Oak, by the way, is an enterprise fund, which means no general fund dollars go to support the facility, including the sales tax dollars, for example. So that particular part of the property, the driving range, is the one that is in the least well-condition, if you will. It needs the most work. And it's a big property and it's sloping. And so right now, it's draining such that it's muddy and it does not drain properly. So balls get plugged there. It's hard to maintain. It's hard to pick. And so for us to improve that facility is going to take a significant amount of engineering work, whether it's civil engineering, soils engineering, structural engineering. So the design to do that is significant and the work to do that will be significant. So it's not a small project, even though it might look like that. So the first phase of that would be the specific design for that range. If there were other work that would be involved, the $750,000 would go toward construction project management and potentially for a second phase, which might be a practice game. And so we're trying to anticipate this work that may be coming. We're trying to make it a little bit easier for staff to manage this project because there are very few people out there to actually do this kind of work. And I'll close with this. This is not unique to the operation of Boundary Oak. The enterprise fund has successfully managed improvements to the course, cart path, irrigation, clubhouse, with lease revenue bonds, for example, which have been paid back successfully by the course without tapping specific funds from the general fund other than a loan for the current clubhouse, which is being repaid. So as a whole, this project makes sense, but I appreciate your question and thanks for giving me the opportunity to clarify.
Thank you, Kevin. Do you have anything?
I do. You know, I had concerns about this one or questions in terms of the master consulting services agreement was for a higher amount, the 750, even though the initial design phase that we would be approving would be 255,000. So that was one concern. And another is kind of the scope creep that we understand really kind of what the project is. And is there the equivalent of a capital improvement plan for Boundary Oak like we have for our city infrastructure?
We have a capital budget, a capital reserve and specific capital projects that we have identified in the Boundary Oak operating and capital budget. Every two years, we bring that to you for your approval. So yes, there is.
And is a practice range included in that?
It is.
It is. Okay. Any other questions?
Does she have a further comment if nobody else has any questions? So my concern here is not that we don't need it, because I think we do. I still do have a question about the design cost of it, but we're talking about some big items coming up this year and we're talking about some major undertaking when it comes to a poll that's already gone out into the, to the public about what we're even looking for a potential sales tax. And I'm just concerned that even though this is coming from a different fund, that we're sending a message that we're doing something like this and yet we're asking for potential increased revenues in another arena under another bucket. I've just got a concern about that, that are we setting ourselves up for a challenging discussion down the line this year? It has nothing to do specifically with some of these areas.
Councilmember Haskew?
I'm going to say what you said, Kevin, a different way, which is essentially all of the costs of the Boundary Oak are covered by the users of Boundary Oak and it has nothing to do with our basic infrastructure issues or anything. And if it needs to be done and the people are willing to pay for it, I don't know why we would get in their way.
Mayor Protem.
I would concur with Councilmember Haskew's comments, but I would also say that when you have an enterprise fund, which is a separate operating business, you need that fund to have satisfied users in order for it to basically service itself. And so if one aspect of the business is in poor condition, doesn't drain properly, isn't conducive to the experience that is needed, it will actually drag the business down and it will start a downward cycle. It's almost like having tables and chairs that are not, you know, dented and damaged and basically poor infrastructure in a restaurant. So I'm supportive of this and I do understand what the need for a, I would call it, a master agreement is it allows us to move more quickly to be able to add to the project, but not without our approval. And so this would be additional program. You don't spend the money unless we have approved that we move forward on a project idea. So I'm happy to move the item.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? You know, I have concerns with this one, too. I prefer that we, you know, table this one for now. I don't, my understanding is it's not a high priority, urgent item. I thought Councilmember Wilk made some cogent points about the larger infrastructure needs of the city and the conversations we'll be having with the community shortly about those pool and community center-related. And so with that, those are my comments. And go ahead and call, you can call the roll.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
No.
Mayor Francois?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay, next on the agenda is public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. Does any member of the public wish to provide public comments at this time? If so, please use the raise hand feature. Press star nine if you're connected by audio only. For those who desire to provide public comment, please raise your hand so that we can identify the total number of speakers that desire to speak. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record at this time. I note that the time is 6:35, correction, 6:37. And we will take public comment on items not on the agenda until approximately 7:07 and then the remainder of any such comments at the end of the open session portion of the meeting. City clerk, are there any members of the public who would like to provide comments? And I'll note that we have Mr. Bennett. We're going to allow persons in the chamber to make their public comments first before going to Zoom. Floor is yours, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening. My name's Pete Bennett. I've been a resident here in the area, beginning in Walnut Creek from 1978. I have a long history. Things that have been bad and things have been good. Well, my first comment is to the department. I ran into a little trouble with a car transaction a couple days ago and one of their officers straightened it out and saved me maybe $4,000 or $5,000. I'm still trying to replace 10 cars, something you probably either do or don't know about. I had one towed away. Chief, there were false tickets put on my truck. Cost me, by the time they were done with the tickets and the fines and all that other baloney, my car got towed away with $6,000 in fines when I only had it for March till December. There's a lot going on just with that truck. It's very important because what was in that truck is, if you can see it, this is the house next door to my wife and my sons in paradise. For those of you who remember Campfire, I almost lost my family three years ago. And so it's very complicated. I'm an arson victim. My truck exploded on the freeway and I've been yakking about it since 2004. Nobody ever comes through. My cars get totaled in Lafayette. Nobody ever comes through. My cars get towed away here. Nothing. On the 27th of this month, Kirkland &amp; Ellis, the largest law firm in the country, is about to defraud a federal judge. JudgeAlsup.com, and I'm in the middle. And the truck that was towed away had the maps that helped start this fire. I worked for them. I know exactly what happened. We're going to be defrauded in the billions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next speaker. Just a reminder for all the speakers here and on Zoom, we're taking public comments on items that are not on the agenda tonight. The buffer zone ordinance consideration is on the agenda. We'll get to that in a little bit. So you can lower your hand or sit down if you're here to talk about the buffer zone ordinance. And if you'd like to talk about anything else, welcome.
Hi. Happy New Year. Jan Warren, resident here in Walnut Creek. I'm here to ask you to hire a full-time sustainability coordinator. We're in a climate crisis and we can't continue business as usual. When proposals come to the council, if the council chooses to have a discussion, they give direction to staff to research something specific and come back to make a presentation for council discussion. This is part of the process that was used for the Planned Parenthood Buffer Zone discussion tonight. For seven years, I worked with Cara Batista-Rao. Early on, she shared about city climate programs at our Interfaith Climate Action Network. She was available to answer questions and give us directions. She was professional and gave timely responses. I knew her work was split between housing and climate. She helped lead the implementation of the 2015 Climate Action Plan and began the current Sustainability Plan. Generally, city council members come and go and even city managers, but the city depends upon dedicated staff to carry the historical knowledge, to provide the research and direction to the council. Then the staff leads the implementation. I don't honestly know who to go to anymore. The ECO website hasn't been kept up current. Our process has stalled at a time when we can least afford it. We asked for a climate emergency declaration and we're pretty much told it was more important to produce results than just have symbolic words. Well, I haven't seen any measurable results on climate that was listed as a priority lately. The Contra Costa Board of Supervisors passed new building codes today, which are effective June 1 of this year, that will require all-electric for all new residential, retail, hotels and offices. All the cities have been living through COVID and staffing issues. I need more air. The city needs to refocus on climate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mark Joffe. I live at 1655 North California Boulevard in Walnut Creek. A few days ago, I received an invitation to participate in a poll about a proposed half percent sales tax increase for the city. Not sure where this came from, but I'm very concerned that this is something that may be under active consideration. This 0.5% increase would come on top of a similar increase that was enacted as a result of Measure X at the county level in 2020. So it'll take up our property taxes from, sorry, excuse me, our sales taxes from 8.25% at the beginning of the pandemic to now 9.25%. And when we consider that restaurants are just struggling to come back from the effects of the pandemic and that restaurant customers are dealing with the effects of inflation, putting this additional pressure on the business community in Walnut Creek really seems to me to be inappropriate. I would also note that while there was a very interesting laundry list of things that this money would be potentially spent on, that the city received, is receiving $8 million in American Rescue Plan funds. I know that $2 million of that has been obligated, but that still leaves a significant amount for investments that you may deem appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joffe. Next speaker.
Hi, council members. My name's Denise Comm. I've lived in Walnut Creek for over 40 years. I'm following on the sales tax increase issue. I've seen too many cases where we've not had accountability, where we have things proposed that are nice to have, that get people to say, yes, let's do it. But people are struggling. This is going to be regressive on the poorer members of our community and a lot of those people are people who've lost jobs and have struggled through the last few years. I don't think this is the time to do it. I previously sent a letter to you guys. I notice it's not in the public comments on the website. I'm very concerned about this. I don't think we can afford it. I think it's too soon. And we have to look carefully at how we're spending the money. Has a citizen committee been able to audit the books and look at how the spend has been going? We can't keep increasing these taxes. They're adding too much to the cost of living around here and it is driving people away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Comm. Are there any other members in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda? I'm not seeing any, so we'll turn over to the Zoom feed.
First up, we have 350 Contra Costa.
Hello, my name's Lisa Jackson and I'm representing 350 Contra Costa. We're a volunteer-led climate and environmental justice group. We did send a letter in about this as well earlier today. Several climate and environmental organizations are very concerned about the lack of action on the development and implementation of the Sustainability Action Plan that the council had said was one of its strategic imperatives over the past few years. I would really like to see this plan move forward quickly. We are in a climate emergency and to reach our goals of the Paris Climate Agreement, we need to be reducing greenhouse gases by 5% every year. This year, the greenhouse gases actually increased by 6%. So we're going in the wrong direction and it's really down to local authorities like yourself to take strong climate action and make sure we can move forward. What we're looking for is a replacement of the Sustainability Coordinator that left in the summer. And as Jan said on her comments, this is going to be really important to ensure that when there is a plan in place, that it can be implemented and there's somebody that has the skill and the capacity to be able to push these programs forward within the council and within the city. We look forward to seeing that happen and also for the next phase of the Climate Action Plan to be finalized. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next speaker.
Next speaker is BG. User.
Oh, am I muted?
I hope we didn't see on our screen. Hello, welcome.
Oh, hi. Okay, sorry, I was talking and I didn't know I was muted. Okay, I will speak again. My name is Barbara Guinness and I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996. And last time I communicated with council was with Councilwoman Silva. And one of the subjects we talked about was the Nomad Ecology Environmental Report, which was being completed for the proposed high-speed bike flow trail in Southwest Lime Ridge. In July, she said the environmental work cannot be completed until after September. Well, September came and went. I didn't hear any word about it. So I finally asked city clerk about it in December and the report was complete and she sent it to me. I was just kind of wondering why the city didn't advise that the report was completed when so many citizens had been asking for it. I would have went to the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Group, but they haven't had a meeting where they talked about the bike flow trail since April of 2021. They canceled the June, October, December regular meetings. They only had three meetings last year. Recently, a neighbor advised that a local mountain biking website stated the environmental report was complete and that the Trails Committee voted to continue with the high-speed mountain bike trails planned. After communicating with Public Works, I found out that that was true and they were going on with the plan just as they had proposed. had proposed. If we hadn't seen that mountain biking website, this information would never have been known by us, except for the mountain biking community, which was definitely in the know. They knew about it. Just as I had feared, the environmental report was completed, the Prose Commission and Trails Committee met and said, let's go with it without any communications from the general public. You have an active user community in the Lime Ridge Open Space, and they expect to be informed in their input and opinions respected. So I'm asking, please, let's open the public communication lines, so we could talk about the environmental report and other proposed changes to Lime Ridge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Guinness. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Carol Wade.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Walnut Creek about nine years now, and I'd like to ask the council to do something very simple that would have a significant environmental impact. It does not need to wait for a Sustainability Action Plan. That is to control vehicle idling. The city already has an anti-idling policy in place that was approved for staff vehicles last February. It's worked well. Residents may not be aware of this, but it saved thousands of dollars in fuel and unnecessary maintenance, the same that could be appreciated by residents. I think many people think they need to start their car and wait, which used to be true before fuel injection about 25 years ago, but hasn't been true for a long time. So I would just ask simply that this policy, which I sent a copy to each of you yesterday or the day before, be changed, three words that refer to city-owned vehicles and equipment, merely be changed to say all residents and visitors. Currently, it already, although it addresses city vehicles, in part of it, it says specifically, "This policy shall be communicated to all employees and reaffirmed periodically." I know before she left, Cara Batista-Rao did have a rollout and information to employees. This was a policy that was arrived at by a group, working group from the city planners and the attorney. So this has been tailored to Walnut Creek's need from best practices from several other cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wade. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Bob Joe.
Hi, Bob. Are you there?
Mayor Francois, city council members, mayor, and I wanted to comment on a couple of things that Jan Warren had already brought up. Because the county has already come up with their new building codes, and all that is regarding new construction, but the vast majority of housing stock is what we currently have. And I'm thinking that if Walnut Creek had some incentives for homeowners to decarbonize and electrify their homes, you know, that would be a good thing. Again, something like that, where I don't see too many other cities with a program like that, that would put, you know, Walnut Creek on the map again. So I'd like you to consider that, incentives. And, you know, it doesn't have to be big incentives, just something that the homeowners would appreciate. And so for their efforts, yeah, the city would give them recognition. Monetary incentive would be wonderful. Because the city doesn't have a Sustainability Coordinator, here's an idea that I would like you really to consider, is to have an intern Sustainability Commission, volunteers, expert volunteers in the community that can help out on.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. If you'd like, you can email the remainder of your comments to us. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Gary Farber.
Hi, Gary. Are you on?
There. Okay, sorry. Mayor and city council, my name is Gary Farber. I'm a longtime resident of Walnut Creek. I'm also on the Policy Committee of 350 Contra Costa. As mentioned before, we sent you a letter today. It's on the agenda. You're aware that last year, the council decided to not pass a climate emergency resolution and instead wait for the Sustainable Action Plan. It's unfortunate that that plan has taken longer than we have time to wait for. You know, it is a climate emergency. We need action now. The climate emergency resolution was going to start taking some actions that the city could have dealt with without waiting for the entire SAP to be dealt with, to be finished, I should say. So the city really needs to get a full-time sustainability officer hired to help, you know, oversee the SAP, to coordinate with the other departments, to do outreach and education of the community. So that's vital, and I hope the city will take, you know, take the climate emergency seriously and take action as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farber. Any other speakers? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, there are no additional hands raised for public comment.
Okay, so we'll close public comment on public communications. Would any of my colleagues like to ask any questions or comments related to the public comments?
I have some questions.
Mayor Protam Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I appreciate all of the public comments tonight. We had a number related to the Sustainability Action Plan and our staffing, and I'm hoping the city manager could, we know this is important. It is important, but perhaps you can explain where we are in the status and our staffing levels post, kind of post-COVID.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. Dan Buckshai, city manager. So just a couple of details to clarify. Our former Sustainability Co-
I think you need to talk further into the mic. I can't hear you.
Might be through the mask here. It's not quite picking enough. Is that better?
Yes, that's better.
Our prior Sustainability Coordinator, Ms. Batista Ray, was halftime, halftime dedicated to coordinating that activity and then halftime to housing, as was noted. I want to clarify, she left in October, not this summer. And we have been, we are looking to actively fill that position. It is on our list of recruitments and positions to fill. But as you noted, Mayor Protam, that list has grown in the post-pandemic with the labor shortage and a wave of retirements and other changes in the city. So it is on the list to be hired and recruited. It's not, you know, paused on hold or canceled in any way, shape, or form. Certainly, these take longer than anybody would prefer, myself included. And that's true for several other positions. Our vacancy rate is currently about double what it historically is. We normally run about a 7% to 8% vacancy rate. We're at about 15%, which is now up over about 50 positions. And then we do have quite a number of staff that are out, either because they have contracted COVID or they have been exposed to COVID and have to quarantine and remain out of the workforce for a period of time. So we're running a little more thin overall than anybody would prefer to do so. What I want to clarify, though, is after our last staff member left, because this is a council priority, which means it's one of our top five priorities, her duties were reassigned to the Director of Community Development. It wasn't just set aside and not worked on. Now that said, we have had a transition since that time. About a month or so ago, our Community Development Director did move on to pursue something else. And so we are obviously recruiting for that position as well. But I want to clarify also, we don't, it's not as if this is the only person that works on climate activity. We do have consultants that are helping update our Climate Action Plan. They're continuing to do that work. And we do have other staff that contribute. So it's not as if we just have half of one person that's working on sustainability that is doled out to other staff, and that work remains. Now, do you want to be clear? It's taking longer than anybody would prefer. And those who are interested, we will be providing an update on all five of the city council priorities at our next meeting on February 1, which will obviously include the status of where we're at on the Sustainability Plan.
There was, thank you, and I appreciate that. So the work is continuing with the consultant or consultants, and we are actively recruiting to fill that position as well as, if we have a 15% vacancy, that sounds somewhere in the range of 50 to 60 people out of a 350 to 360-person organization. Am I getting my numbers?
Those numbers are fairly accurate. That's correct.
Could I change subjects? We also had a comment this evening that it appeared, the presumption is that the Prose Commission had a meeting that was not noticed. That did not happen, did it?
Not that I'm aware of, and it'd be a big problem if it did. So I do not believe that the Prose Commission has heard an update on the flow trail relating the environmental report. I don't think that's occurred. We do have our Public Works Director, Heather Ballinger, on Zoom. Should you want more detail, she can speak to the status of the flow trail and the environmental study.
Is she available?
Yes, she should be.
She will.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Heather.
Good evening. Heather Ballinger, Public Works Director. Thanks for the question. Yeah, just to make some corrections, the environmental document that was referred to in the public comment has been completed and given to staff, and we're reviewing it. We had planned to take it to the Park Recreation and Open Space Commission in December, but unfortunately, that meeting had to be canceled for several reasons. And so we still plan to take it back to our Prose Commission. Of course, that will afford everybody an opportunity to see the report and make comments on it. And in addition to that staff report, we'll be coming up with some recommendations for the Prose Commissioners to vet and talk about. The Trail Open Space Committee is a subcommittee that has bike advocates, equestrians, open space advocates. They did meet to discuss the flow trail, and partly because we had received a letter from the Open Space Foundation, and they wanted to reconvene, and they did that. And so we can't control that the bike community put that information out there. But we do plan, again to repeat, we plan to take it to Prose in February or April, probably the February meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff based on public communications? Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests, closed session announcements. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were no reportable actions from a closed session this evening.
Okay, city manager reports.
Yeah, good evening, Dan Buckshai, city manager, once again. Wanted to provide a brief update regarding the Behavioral Health Crisis Response Program that the city has been co-leading with the county and other cities in the region, as there was a major update, I believe it was last Wednesday, that is available on the county website at cchealth.org for anybody who is interested. And the purpose of that update is we did achieve a major milestone that I want to provide more clarity on, and that significant amount of money, funding, was allocated for this project through the Measure X sales tax that was approved by the voters countywide for all of Contra Costa back in November of 2020. So this program, which is now being called A3, which means anyone, anywhere, anytime in Contra Costa County would be able to receive a mental health crisis support, either on the phone or in person. And the goal would be to have a response time of 15 minutes or less, anywhere in the county if someone is in a crisis. More specifically, the county Board of Supervisors ultimately, through the Measure X advisory process, allocated $5 million of one-time funding to build the physical facility to house the Miles Hall Crisis Call Center, which would be the center that would receive all mental health crisis calls, whether it be through eventually 988, 211 through 911, that if it's mental health-related, would come into this call center and be coordinated between mental health therapists, potentially law enforcement, other providers, to determine the best way to respond. In addition, that facility would house walk-in folks who may be seeking some assistance as well. And then the county also allocated $20 million of ongoing funding annually to help fund this program, so that the crisis response teams that would respond out in the field would be augmented significantly. Currently, the county has two mobile crisis response teams for the entire county, Contra Costa. With this additional funding, that would be increased to 34 teams countywide, which would allow for that faster response time to anyone, anywhere, anytime. There would be three levels of response that would be targeted, depending upon the severity of the issue, that would be determined by those triaging the calls through the Crisis Call Center. The first level would effectively be a social welfare check that's often done by police, that instead would be done by an EMT or emergency medical technician, somebody who rides in an ambulance potentially, along those lines, as well as a social worker to go check on somebody. The second level would be somebody who's in more of a mental health crisis but is deemed to not be violent or to have the potential to not escalate to violence. And in that case, potentially an EMT and then either one or two mental health clinicians, basically trained therapists, would respond. And then the third, if the situation is more severe and the individual's in a severe mental health crisis, and there is the potential that it could escalate to violence, it would be a paired response with mental health clinicians and law enforcement jointly. And also, in addition to this, the other part of this program is to look for additional options for where to take folks after there has been a response on a crisis basis. Right now, the options are to the county psychiatric hospital, to a hospital at, to an emergency room at a hospital, or to the county jail, are really the three options. So there is intention to have additional options where folks could go for treatment related to a crisis. So major milestone in that this funding was recently allocated, I believe it was in November that it occurred. So there's a celebration. And for folks that watch this, you'll see that there are dozens and dozens, actually over 50 different collaborators throughout the county, involving folks from all walks of life and possibly, most importantly, those who have lived experience with mental health crisis, who have family members who have experienced such a crisis. Quickly, the next step is for the county to actually allocate the funding, to issue the checks, if you will, to various programs. That, in addition to this, the other programs that are receiving Measure X funds, that's anticipated to occur in April, and actually have a meeting in the next week with our cross-county team to map out the next steps in terms of ramp-up of how we go from two teams to 34 over what period of time and what that ramp-up plan looks like. And that is my update for this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Buckshai. We'll move on to council member reports and updates on activities. Why don't we start with Councilmember Darling?
Thank you. Mostly, it was Christmas and New Year's and hiding from the Omicrons. I did go to our join in Zoom on the A3 kickoff, and I was truly impressed with the amount of work that the county staff and our city, including our leaders that kicked that off. It's a tremendous upgrade for our whole community, and I think it will reap benefits from it for years. I went to, along with many of my fellow council members, the Chamber of Commerce Civic Affairs Subcommittee, had a great presentation on opportunities to bring innovative biotech and life sciences companies to Walnut Creek, and that was very exciting to see. The Homeless Task Force met again early this month and has a couple projects underway. Things were kind of slow because of the holidays, but they did report out some good results from the winter shelter. They're having a few people that are participating in the winter shelter that we funded that are actually finding- that are actually finding a place to go, which is always great. So that's my report. Other than getting to go to a retirement celebration where somebody rode in on a horse. So I'll let somebody else cover that one.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you, Mayor, and Happy New Year to everyone. And hopefully, the holidays were memorable, celebratory, and isolated. The, last week, the mayor and I met for the legislative committee, and we discussed our legislative platform for 2022, which will come to council at the February 1st meeting. The, I would elaborate on the Civic Affairs Forum, that they're currently working on the forum topic for February, which, if all goes well, would be something called State of the State. They talked about trying to get the governor to come, but that was probably not going to work. The, I want to thank the city again for everything and city leadership for the work on the A3 program. It is remarkable that that has been stood up as quickly as it has been. And in part, it is because of the voter approval of the half-cent sales tax measure. So it wouldn't have been possible without that. So many times, it's new programs and new efforts that need to be funded with these longer-range dollars in the communities. I had an opportunity to visit the Los Angeles County Division of the League of Cities 10 days ago, and they were, I will mention that they were talking a lot about SB 1383, this organics waste, because the LA Basin and Southern California is not near as ready as we are. So while they're working on memorable things on water and desalinization and water reclamation, they have not been in the organics waste arena in the way that we have been. So we are, we can be happy for that because they don't even have green waste bins in most of their cities at the curbside, and we've had it for 15 to 20 years. So they were happy to hear about those grant programs that are available from the state as well. And I think I can leave it there and pass it on to the next person.
Okay. Councilmember Wilk, you are the next person.
Next one in line, all right. So there was the first CalCities Committee Policy Meetings, and I think probably any of us that were on the policy committees were there. Of course, Cindy Silva is the president of the League of Cities. And so it was really just about what we're going to be seeing for this next year. So nothing specific at that point, but that's coming. I did want to mention, I wanted to ask the city manager about this, or potentially the chief of police. There was another, another incident of vandalism at our parks, at Heather Farm Park. And pictures came out, and essentially cars went on there in the middle of the night a couple of weeks ago, did donuts, completely ruined the grass area just outside the Alabilly's playground area, which means the park has to then be closed in that area. And it takes weeks and weeks to reseed, and it costs thousands of dollars to then, to fix it, then maintain it. We're seeing this in multiple parks right now. And I know a lot of people are frustrated. I'm frustrated, of course, as probably anybody in this room is. How can we, what more can we do to prevent this? Can more cameras be installed? Can more police, can more police patrols go around? What can we do to deter this kind of activity? Because it's hard. It's the middle of the night, and we only have so many police involved.
Short answer is yes. And we are looking at additional cameras and some additional patrols. We're beefed up, and I don't know if our chief is here, if he wants to speak to that in more detail. We're also looking at some other physical changes that can be made to some of the parks that would prevent access to the facilities. And we do have, again, Heather Ballinger on the call, who can speak to that in more detail. But there are some challenges with the fields that are, that are wide open. And so part of that is the additional security cameras, and at least for the time being, some additional patrol.
Thank you. I think this all goes out to the entire community is that there's a good chance that these are our own teenagers that are out there with other friends and joyriding around late on a weeknight or weekend night. And I think it really goes to that we are going to have to be the parents that we need to be and make sure that our children are where they say they're going to be and being held accountable because they're truly ruining it for everybody right now. So I'll put that one out there. I read an article over the weekend regarding Clipper cards, and I was surprised. I sit on the County Connection Board, and I know that Councilmember Haskew sits on the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. I was surprised to see that Clipper cards, if you have value on them after six months, the value disappears and goes back into the clouds somewhere that Clipper owns. And that you can get those refunded to you, but of course, you have to email and go through a bunch of rig and roll. My concern here is that with COVID and the pandemic and people that are working from home more, as soon as they use their Clipper cards and try to get on the BART for the first time, knowing that they have $20 or $30 on it, they're not going to be able to use it. And they can't just email then and get the funds refunded, and there's going to be a tremendous backup. And just on County Connection, we are trying to encourage people to come back using public transit. And for everything from climate action reasons and just to get more cars off the road in general, and we're encouraging people and showing them how we're cleaning the buses and BART and everything in public transit. And now we're doing something that's like shooting ourselves in the foot. So I've asked County Connection to bring this up at our next board meeting next week so that we can put the weight of County Connection behind this and make our case to MTC and the Clipper Cards that we need to figure out something different. Just taking money back because it's not been used in six months. I haven't been on BART in six months, and I used to go on BART at least once a month. So that's just something I wanted to let the community know about, that I'm moving on that one as well after seeing the article. And on that happy note, I'll mention that commission applications are now being accepted for all of the commissions that are in Walnut Creek. We've got planning and transportation. Yep, we've got these cards here. Design, there's design review and arts. And did I miss one? I think I did. Pro, and Park Recreation Open Space. We've already heard about that tonight. So please go onto the city website, check for commission applications. In some, in a couple cases, you don't even have to be a resident of Walnut Creek, and most you do, though. Check it out, apply, and help be a leader in the city. That's my report.
I appreciate that. I wanted to add one item for you to bring up on the Clipper card because I have been commuting on BART recently, and I've used the app on my phone and got the Clipper card in my Apple Wallet. I also had a physical Clipper card. When you get the electronic Clipper card, it automatically blocks your physical one, which I had funds on. So now I believe I'll have to make a phone call to get those funds transferred. But it definitely, it should be made easier to commute on public transit, not harder. So thank you for advocating for the residents on that. Councilmember Haskew.
Wow. So we had a lot of retirements, and part of the reason we're, we're, we're kind of experiencing part of the Great Resignation is that a lot of people have earned their retirements and aging out. And it's, it's getting hard to find younger people who are as sophisticated and as intelligent and dedicated. But they exist, and you're going to help us find it, we, find them, we hope. I, basically, a lot of my organizations take January off. The one thing I've got to look forward to tomorrow night is at Contra Costa Transportation Authority, we're going to have a presentation about how the transportation issue fits into the Concord Naval Weapons Station and who's in charge and how should we put it together. It will be a long, complicated system, I am sure. And I am looking forward to hearing lots of really wise people talk about what we can and should do. And I believe that's it for me.
Well, great. I had a few meetings. I'll work in reverse order here. Today, I met with Councilmember Darling on, with the, we're members of the Public Education Committee meeting, and we heard an update on school resource officers, crossing guards. We also heard an interesting presentation from some young women who are Girl Scouts in Danville and as part of their Silver, Silver Award are doing a self-defense initiative. And they've been successful in getting the Danville schools to promote that as part, part of their physical education. And we connected them with some school board members in our community as well. Along with Councilmember Wilk, I serve on the DEI Task Force. The city's DEI Task Force met last week. We discussed the community survey that we've been working on with the consultants and members of the task force. That is tentatively scheduled to launch on March 16th. We talked about volunteering for different roles, communications, or partnerships. And so we'll look forward to seeing that move forward in the next month or two. I also attended the Civic Affairs Meeting with Life Science and Biotech. I thought it was very interesting, and I think it merits us looking into what we can do to try to encourage those types of businesses to locate here in Walnut Creek. Mayor Protem Silva talked about the Ledge Committee and the upcoming February 1st hearing date. I have some homework to do on that. Earlier this month, as a liaison to sister cities, the city has two sister cities, Shiofolk Hungary and Naccheto Italy. For the past few years, because of the pandemic, unfortunately, we haven't been able to travel to those cities. And a lot of our young people, the seventh grade level, they're going into eighth grade, are the ones that go to the, to visit those cities. They haven't been able to partake in that program. They're starting communications now with the educators in, in Europe to see if it's safe to do that this year. So we're hopeful that in the next month or two, we'll hear back about whether it's a go for this year. And the seventh graders will be able to apply, and then when they're in eighth grade, get to, get to take advantage of that program. Finally, I, on behalf of the city, attended the mayor's conference earlier this month. And at that conference, we elected Tom Butt, who is the mayor of Richmond, as the chair of the mayor's conference. And Rob Schroeder, the mayor of Martinez, is the vice chair. We also heard a really interesting presentation from the president of the Rosie the Riveter National Trust, which is located in Richmond and sounds like a fascinating place to visit and learn about important history, including that 6 million Rosies helped win World War II. And that's right here in our backyard. So that concludes our council member and staff announcements, and we're going to move on to our consideration item. And that is a report regarding a potential buffer zone ordinance and alternative measures related to Planned Parenthood Facility in Walnut Creek. At this time, I would invite staff to provide the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Steve Mattis, City Attorney. I'll be making the presentation this evening. I'm assisted by Chief Knox and Lieutenant Hibbs, as necessary. And I would like to acknowledge also Alexander Wolf, the Assistant City Attorney. From our office has done a tremendous amount of work on this issue as well, too. But she had a prior commitment this evening. Tonight's her father's birthday, and so they had planned this a long time ago. So Ally is not with us tonight, but she deserves a lot of credit for this work. So the item, the, the, the purpose of this meeting is that the city council had requested information about a potential buffer zone ordinance following public comments requesting consideration of a buffer zone ordinance to protect patients and staff access at the Planned Parenthood Facility in Walnut Creek. This arose out of incidents that have happened at the Planned Parenthood Facility over the last few years. As the council will recall from the staff report, there have been 42 calls to the police department related to protests at Planned Parenthood between January 2020 and November of 2021. The public has come before the city council and asked the council to consider a buffer zone at the Planned Parenthood Facility that would then protect patient access and staff access at the facility. And the council then followed that up with a request for additional information. So the purpose of this evening's meeting is for the council to receive information from staff, receive public comments, and provide direction to staff regarding further consideration of a buffer zone ordinance and related interim measures. There are presently a number of laws in California that relate to access to facilities such as Planned Parenthood. And those laws include Penal Code Section 423.2, which does make it a crime to interfere, intimidate, or injure any person who is attempting to enter into a facility such as Planned Parenthood. There's also a new law that makes it a crime to intentionally videotape, film, photograph, or record a person within 100 feet of a reproductive health services facility, or to distribute such material or to intimidate individuals trying to use those facilities from becoming or remaining a health services patient, provider, or assistant. So those are the section, Penal Code Section 423.2 restrictions that exist under law. There are also requirements and restrictions that are associated with Penal Code Section 242 and 240 related to assault and battery of individuals. And Walnut Creek also has limitations under the municipal code that limit the ability to place objects within a public right-of-way, so things sidewalks or streets, that interfere with the use of those and the ability to cross over sidewalks and utilize sidewalks. Walnut Creek also has, under Municipal Code Section 4.6-401, a provision that prevents trespassing on private business facilities when the property owner has directed that the individual not be able to access those facilities. So there's a number of existing laws that are already available for use to implement the protections that associate with use of facilities such as Planned Parenthood. There's also a substantial amount of federal case law that applies. And as the council's aware and is represented in the staff report, there are really four primary cases that are kind of controlling the authority of local agencies such as Walnut Creek to be able to consider and adopt ordinances of this, of this type. There are three US Supreme Court cases and one Ninth Circuit case that are the primary controlling cases. The first case out of 1997 is Scheck versus Pro Choice Network of West New York. In that case, there was a 15-foot fixed buffer zone, which prohibited demonstrations within 15 feet of entrances to clinics, parking lots, and driveways, and a 15-foot floating buffer zone prohibiting demonstrators from coming within 15 feet of individuals who were trying to access those facilities. In the Supreme Court decision from 1997, the court actually upheld the 15-foot fixed buffer zone around the entrances to the facility, but found that the 15-foot floating buffer zone around an individual was unconstitutional because it prohibited the ability to have effective communication and for people to enter, experience, and utilize their First Amendment rights. The next case is Hill versus City, versus State of Colorado. And in that case, Colorado enacted and made it unlawful within 100 feet of a healthcare facility for individuals to knowingly approach within eight feet of another person for the purposes of passing leaflets or handbills, displaying signs, or engaging in oral protest, education, or counseling with that person. And so there was, if you, if you think about it, there was a, it was a regulation that first looked at what is within 100 feet of the healthcare facility. And then within that 100-foot radius itself, there was a restriction that prohibited people from coming within eight feet of, of individuals as they were trying to access those facilities for purposes of, of advocating either for or against the services that were being provided in there. In that case, the restrictions were held to be constitutional. And it's important for the council to understand they were held to be constitutional because the eight-foot buffer zone around the individual didn't prevent there from being kind of normal volume conversations between individuals. So it didn't actually limit the ability of a protester to be able to share their thoughts. But it also allowed for the individuals to have a certain level of privacy as they were walking into the, into the facilities. That, that Supreme Court decision was then followed by a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision. The Ninth Circuit is the circuit that, that is controlling within California. And in that case, Hoy versus City of Oakland, the court ultimately upheld and, well, upheld in part, but overturned in part, the, an ordinance that prohibited a 100, that prohibited protests within a 100-foot zone around entrances to reproductive healthcare facilities. And it prohibited the acts of any knowing or willful approach within eight feet without the consent of an individual seeking entry into the clinic if the purpose was to engage in conversation, protest, counseling, or various other forms of speech. That particular case is very informative because it found constitutional on its, on its face, the ordinance. It said that the ordinance looked like the ordinance that's been adopted in Colorado, that the Supreme Court- that the Supreme Court had upheld, but it said that it was unconstitutional as applied because the evidence in that case suggested that it was only being enforced against one side of the protesters. It wasn't being enforced equally across all individuals. So the Ninth Circuit has upheld restrictions that are very similar to what the U.S. Supreme Court upheld in the Colorado case. The last case that I think the council should be aware of is the McCollum versus Coakley case out of 2014, which is again a United States Supreme Court case. In that case, the legislature of Massachusetts had adopted a 35-foot buffer zone around the entrances, exits, and driveways of reproductive healthcare facilities. The Supreme Court ultimately found that that ordinance was too broad. They found it to be unconstitutional. They said that the First Amendment rights had not been sufficiently narrowly tailored. The ordinance had not been narrowly tailored to protect the First Amendment rights of the individuals. And in that case, the court was concerned that Massachusetts had not taken and had not acted upon steps that could more narrowly scope the ordinance, and that they did not fully consider least restrictive means that could have accomplished their goal of trying to protect the individuals going into the facilities. So those are the four primary cases that guide how public agencies such as Walnut Creek can adopt ordinances of this sort. So in summary, what the courts have said is that a city can adopt a content-neutral, time, place, and manner regulation of speech in this context, so that you can adopt one, an ordinance, that does apply a buffer zone under the restrictions that the courts have upheld. But the courts have said that such an ordinance needs to be narrowly tailored to serve a significant governmental interest, and that the agency should consider less restrictive means and show that they were tried, and that those less restrictive means did not adequately address the issue, so therefore caused the need for the ordinance to be adopted. So if we apply those standards to the circumstances and the requests that the council has made, what we would propose to the council for consideration, if the council decides to further consider this issue, is an ordinance that's similar to the structure of the ordinances that were adopted and upheld in Colorado and in the Oakland ordinance, and that are very similar to additional ordinances that exist in San Francisco and Napa, which themselves have not been subject to a legal challenge, but are basically structured along the same lines as the Colorado ordinance was and the Oakland ordinance. And what would these do? So this form of an ordinance, if the council were to consider it, would prohibit approaching a person within eight feet, prohibit approaching within eight feet, an individual who's trying to access a facility, and again, within that 100-foot radius of the entire facility. So what this diagram is showing the council, and I'll leave this up for a while so that you have a chance to look at it. This is showing what a 100-foot radius would be from the two entrances that exist at the current Planned Parenthood facility. There are actually two entrances to the building. And so if you look at this, this blue shaded area is showing what a 100-foot radius is. And so if the council were to consider adopting an ordinance of this, the ordinance would apply within these areas that are shaded in blue, but the ordinance itself would only impose a buffer of eight feet around the individuals who are entering and exiting the property. And there is an important consideration that the council should be aware of and that the Supreme Court has thought about. This ordinance, if adopted, prohibits a protester from actively walking to within eight feet of somebody who is entering or leaving a facility seeking the services of the facility. It actually does not prevent, and the Supreme Court has said you can't prevent, a situation where the person who is using the service is walking into the facility, and they walk within eight feet of the protester. So the purpose of an ordinance of this sort is to have and to limit the ability of someone who is protesting, either in favor or against the services, if you will, that are provided there, from coming themselves to within eight feet of the individual. But if I'm a client of the facility, and I'm walking in, and I walk past a protester, and they happen to be two or three feet away from me when I walk past, that's actually not a violation of the ordinance. It's the active effort of the individual who's protesting, not the individual who's entering or leaving the facility. Sorry, there's a bit of a time delay on Zoom here. So if we step back and we ask ourselves, then, there are a number of laws that California has that are already in place that limit and that place limitations on the ability of individuals to kind of interact with individuals who are going into a medical facility such as Planned Parenthood. And so the question becomes, what does the buffer zone ordinance do that state law does not already provide for? And this slide is showing that it does two things. One, it prohibits harassing conduct, which is conduct directed at a specific person or persons that alarms, seriously distresses, torments, or terrorizes the person. That is not something that's covered under state law right now, but that's what buffer zone ordinances of this type tend to do. The various ordinances that I've identified from Napa, Colorado, San Francisco, Oakland have slightly different wording of each one of these, but in general, this is one aspect of it. The second thing that it does that state law doesn't do is it establishes the set protective zone around the facility at 100 feet of the facility. So it's essentially setting that blue area that I showed you on the buffer zone. State law doesn't do that. State law does, as I noted, prohibit the videotaping of individuals within 100 feet of a facility, but it doesn't cover all of the other issues that come into play. So there was the issue of least restrictive means and alternatives that could be considered. And so in looking at the ordinance, staff looked at some additional options that might minimize the likelihood of negative interactions involving protesters at the Planned Parenthood facility. And we've identified a few alternatives that could be considered. Some of them, they all have pros and cons associated with them, but they're things that the council could consider if they're thinking about less restrictive means of trying to protect the individuals who are walking in and out of a Planned Parenthood facility from a potential disruption. So the first one is that you could have extra police patrols on protest days, and by that we mean extra police patrols within the area. We don't mean individuals stationed at the Planned Parenthood facility. Planned Parenthood itself does have security on site. They generally have one security person on site. We understand they are both inside and outside at various times, but they have one individual on site right now. And with extra police patrols, that does provide the opportunity, if there is an incident that begins to take place, maybe a yelling incident or some kind of interaction between protesters and people who are using the facility, if you have a police presence nearby, that has tended historically to facilitate, in particular, when the police come on site, it minimizes the impacts that are going on, people's behavior change when the police are there than when they're not there at various times. So that's one option that's available. That obviously has staffing commitments associated with it that the council would have to consider Sorry for these pauses in between. I just have to keep up with the Zoom here. So a second thing that was considered was building an entry gate and a fence between the sidewalk and the Planned Parenthood parking lot itself. The main entrance to the Planned Parenthood, or one of the main entrances, is towards the back of the parking lot. And there have, if you look at the police reports, there have been a number of incidents that have taken place within the parking lot itself. And so the thought was to potentially build some kind of fencing or barrier structure along the front of the property, which would provide for more secure area behind the fence. From a staffing standpoint, we think there are some complications with this because of the two mature trees that are on the front of the property. We also think that there are some concerns with the cost issues associated with building a fence along the front there. There also have been concerns raised by Planned Parenthood about this type of approach in that if you were to put a fence and a gate across the driveway, that may simply move the interactions to onsite to slightly offsite into the street itself or in that area. And so there are some downsides to that approach as well, too. But it is something that we have been looking at to see whether or not it was a possible way to try to create separation and minimize the negative impacts and negative interactions between the protesters and the users of the Planned Parenthood facility. Finally, we've looked also at the concept of additional private security. So right now, as we understand it, Planned Parenthood has one security personnel on site at various times. They may occasionally have more than that, but from what we understand, there's one on site. And so it is possible that Planned Parenthood itself could increase its private security there, which could allow for greater reporting to the city of incidents that are happening on, and also additional protection for the individuals who are using their facilities. So those are some of the lesser restrictive alternatives that we thought could be considered as the City Council considers potentially adopting a buffer zone ordinance. And so the council direction that is sought for this evening is for the council to hear the public comments this evening, ask any questions you have of staff, myself, Lieutenant Hibbs, Chief Knox, and then to listen to all of the public comments, and then direct staff as to whether or not you wish us to prepare and present for consideration of buffer zone ordinance or additional alternative measures that the council may wish us to look at further. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. And again, I'm joined by Lieutenant Hibbs and Chief Knox, if the council has any questions for the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Mattis. Colleagues, questions of staff? Who'd like to start? Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much, Steve, for the comprehensive report and the analysis of the legal environment. My question has to do with, you have patients of Planned Parenthood who are trying to get to the front door. Obviously, people are not allowed to trespass on private property, so all of this interaction, by and large, seems to be occurring at the sidewalk, which is...
That is correct. It is also happening in the parking lot, as we understand that, too. I can turn that over to Lieutenant Hibbs, if the council would like more information about that.
All right. That's great. So I'm trying to get into the parking lot, and it sounds like, the way you describe it, if the protesters are standing right at the edge of the apron of the curb cut, that's where they can stand, and they are within that eight feet of the vehicle that I'm in, or even just trying to cross from the other side of the street in, they're okay because they have basically standing their ground, and I'm entering their space as the patient. Really?
Well, the ordinances that have been written, that have been upheld by the Supreme Court, have not found, have not, have found that the ordinances are constitutional when there is an active effort on the part of the protester to approach the person who is entering the facility, as distinguished from a protester just exercising their right to be in a public space, and then the protester comes to them. So the answer to that is yes. It wouldn't be unlawful for a protester to be, for instance, present on a sidewalk. Now, keep in mind, Walnut Creek has ordinances which say that you cannot put objects to block the right-of-way, access across the right-of-way. There are also restrictions on the ability to block driveways, so you have to allow the vehicular access to take place for individuals to either make a left or right turn into the Planned Parenthood facility. So while this ordinance would create a buffer zone around the individual, it's not the only tool that's out there. The city has additional tools that can be enforced already that would allow individuals to be able to use the sidewalks for their intended purpose, to be able to use the driveway for its intended purpose as well, too.
But essentially, the patient cannot be protected on the public sidewalk of gaining act, given they don't have to step back away from them to allow them to, that patient, to move freely.
They don't unless they're actually completely blocking the access across the sidewalk. Then you would have to create some kind of separation to allow that. Or alternatively, if a patient is entering the facility on foot as opposed to in a car, and the patient were to walk through, for instance, the driveway entrance or something like that, that's an area where you could conceivably have both free passage because you need to leave the driveway open for vehicular access, and still have an eight-foot buffer around the individual.
What do we consider conduct that alarms, distresses, or torments? What would be defined as that?
Well, what the courts have looked at, the type of conduct that has occurred in both here in Walnut Creek before, as well as the type of conduct that has occurred in some of these cases, has been kind of getting up, yelling at people very closely, getting up into their, you know, within a close proximity to them, and making inappropriate or threatening types of comments and whatnot. And so the idea is that the ordinance would define the type of activity that would be prescribed, and it would define the radius or the buffer zone that's around. So the officers who are looking at this can look at it from the activity that is taking place, and can also look at the distance and decide whether or not someone is violating it before they issue a citation.
So everything you've described there is audible, not necessarily visual?
That is correct. There are First Amendment protections on the utilization of signs and visual representations. This ordinance is not, this ordinance would be geared towards people leafleting, like walking up right next to you to hand you materials and whatnot, but if someone is standing back and they have a sign, even if that sign is offensive to the viewer, that would not be prohibited under this ordinance, under an ordinance of this.
And why not?
Because there are First Amendment rights to be able to display images even when those images are offensive to other people.
So even if it alarms me such that I look away from where I'm driving and cause an accident?
Well, that's, so that's a slightly different hypothetical here. There are lots of different ways that one could look at this. The fact that the picture is offensive itself is not going to be a violation. The fact that a driver gets distracted by the picture could be a problem, but it wouldn't be a violation of this law. It might be that the, frankly, it might be that the driver is not paying attention to what they're supposed to be doing under those circumstances. We did have an incident of not, and I want to be clear, there was an incident near this Planned Parenthood facility. It was ultimately determined by the police department and by the driver who actually caused the accident, that the individual was actually not paying attention itself to the road. It wasn't actually the protest activity that was happening nearby. And Ryan, can you speak to that?
Ryan Hibbs, Walnut Creek Police Lieutenant. Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem. The collision in question happened with a driver that wasn't paying attention to the road and watched the cars on the side of the road, misjudged the room that they had to be able to make that turn. So then they crossed over to the other side of the road and collided with oncoming traffic, but they weren't distracted by any protest activity.
I was just trying to seek a definition of what conduct would be, could be construed as alarming, distressing, or tormenting, and it seems like it's...
Yeah.
It's oral or audible.
Yeah, it's oral, audible. It is also, you can't leaflet against someone's will within eight feet. So you are creating a, you're creating a zone around the individual. The rationale behind the court's upholding the eight-foot is that the person who is communicating their thought can do so in a normal voice without a megaphone and still do that within eight feet. There's an alternative form of communication, and that's what the Supreme Court case law looks like, is if you're restricting a First Amendment right, are you providing some alternative method of communication that can still happen? And the courts have recognized to date that as long as someone is within eight feet of another person, they can speak in a normal voice, and the person can hear it. another person, they can speak in a normal voice, and the person can hear it.
And private property is protected in all cases, whether eight feet, two feet, one feet, one foot. You're not supposed to enter on private property if it says no trespassing?
From a trespass standpoint, that is correct. The individual that controls private property does have the right to limit access to that property and can make a referral to the Police Department and can have an enforcement understanding with the Police Department so that if someone is improperly on private property, you can, they can be prosecuted for trespass.
Thank you. Those are the questions I have at this point.
Councilmember Darling.
Thank you, and thank you for helping us tease this out. I want to ask a few questions about, it sounds like there's a couple different potential legal courses of action. There's penal, the municipal code, and a proposed buffer ordinance. Which of these can be prosecuted if a Walnut Creek police officer does not observe the action?
So I'm going to turn that over to, I'll answer that, and I'll have Ryan clarify if I misstate this anyway. But if it's a penal code violation, then it can be reported through a citizen's arrest to the officer. If it is a municipal code violation, it needs to be observed by the officer. Ryan, you want to answer that, is that correct?
Yeah.
And would this proposed buffer zone be a municipal code violation?
This would be a municipal code violation, and it would be one that would be cited by the, citation would be issued by the Police Department, and then the prosecution would be through the District Attorney's Office.
Is there a civil cause of action that somebody, if somebody was approaching the Planned Parenthood and felt that they had been approached inappropriately, would they have a civil cause of action, too?
I'm sorry to answer, interject there early. The ordinance can be written to have both a criminal and a civil enforcement mechanism.
Okay. And so we've had 42 calls for service, 10 of which resulted in a police report, and three of which have been referred to the District Attorney. What causes those different calls to go to those different levels? Is it because of what has happened, or whether or not the police officer has observed it?
I'm going to let Lieutenant Hibbs respond to that initially, so...
Thanks, Lieutenant Hibbs.
Positively.
How do you do your job? Sorry.
Very carefully.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, thank you for the question, to answer your question, it depends mainly on what the victim wants. So in many of those cases, they may not want prosecution. If they want prosecution, then what happens is the case will go to the District Attorney's Office. If they want a citizen's arrest, then we can place the suspect under criminal arrest with the help of a citizen's arrest. It lies solely with what the victim wants.
If a police officer is on-site and sees it, can, they can, do they have to have the victim's cooperation to issue a citation?
Not to issue a citation for, say, a municipal code violation or for trespass, because then Planned Parenthood would step in and they would be the victim of that trespass. But if the victim, in this case, anybody being harassed by a protester or being deprived of their right to receive medical attention, we would still need their cooperation in order to send a case to the District Attorney's Office.
Okay, and in the three cases that we did refer to the District Attorney's Office, we had that cooperation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, back to the, Steve gets to come back in. So I know we need to look carefully, make sure that we've looked at other options, and I've looked at the fence option as a way to control this, and I'm wondering, because it would create only one way to enter the property, it might, I'm concerned that that would funnel all the activity there. I do know that, having watched the property a couple times, I see people cut through the other property to get out, to avoid the protesters. Is that something that we should take into account when we, you know, consider whether or not we can do this, whether or not a fence is a reasonable solution if it's cutting off a way for people to avoid protesters?
Yes, we think, from a staff standpoint, we think we should look at all the alternatives pretty thoroughly, and it is important for the council also to consider the input of the properties, the property owners and the tenants that use that business, and it's not just Planned Parenthood. The parking lot that is used by Planned Parenthood is also used by an adjacent business. And so if the council were to consider that alternative, we think it should be looked at from the standpoint of feasibility, constructability, and usefulness. If there, obviously, there would have to be some gate at the driveway, but there's also a walkway, so there's maybe the potential for, I don't know, Ryan, three gates or two gates on the front? One for the driveway, one for the walkway? Yeah. So there's a potential for more than one entrance point, but there is a practical issue that whenever you constrain the access into it, you're kind of, you know, you're potentially forcing the issue to a narrower location as well, too. That is a real concern that people have to think about.
So it doesn't sound like it's a slam dunk that it would solve the...
No, no, no. These are, these are alternatives for consideration. They're not necessarily finished solutions, and staff has not fully evaluated all of them either yet.
Okay. And then on the private security that we, that Planned Parenthood has on-site, it sounds like that the, your understanding is, is that it's the security officer is both inside and outside monitoring the situation, but it's one. Do you know what background that officer, that security personnel person has?
Yeah, I can speak to that. I believe they're retired law enforcement.
So they have a pretty good background as far as, but what ability does that officer have, or that security personnel have, to take action if they see something with the protesters? Because they're not the victim, they couldn't do a citizen's arrest. Alls they can do is try to calm things down?
They couldn't for that particular victim, but they could, they could sign a citizen's arrest for trespass if they wanted to do that.
Okay. All right. And then there was some discussion about noise on-site and amplified noise by protesters. Is that legal in Walnut Creek to use a bullhorn when you're involved in that kind of activity?
It's a violation of the Walnut Creek Municipal Code to use unreasonable noise.
Okay. And then last question, and I'll let somebody else take it on from here, is when we talk about an eight-foot bubble around somebody entering Planned Parenthood, does that eight-foot bubble, one of the other places that we've had difficulty here is counter protesters to the protesters. Does, would an eight-foot ordinance help separate the protesters from the counter protesters?
If, so the purpose of a buffer zone ordinance is to facilitate, to assist in the travel of the people who are either working in or using the facility. A buffer zone ordinance, if the individual who is on one side or the other of the protest happens to be a user, too, then they, and they're there for the purpose of using the facility, but they engage in a protest activity while we're there, that could protect them. If they are simply just protesters and counter protesters, the buffer zone ordinance is not intended to address that issue. There are some, you know, that would be a different set of legal issues that would come into place because you do have to balance the right of people to protest with the ability of an agency to be able to keep protesters safely apart from each other, as we have seen with a lot of organizations in particular and other forms of protests that have happened over the last, for, you know, last few years. There have been instances where the law enforcement has had to take steps to keep protesters and counter protesters apart from each other to try to maintain safety.
Okay. Thanks, Saul.
Thank you, Councilmember Darling. Any other questions of staff at this time? Mayor Protem Silva?
And I don't know, okay. So you can't block a sidewalk. Can we, can somebody just stand around in the apron of a driveway?
Not permanently in a manner that obstructs the utilization of the driveway.
Can we assume if you can walk across it, but you can't just stand there for 30 minutes because you are eventually going to block traffic?
I think that's a safe assumption. I would want to kind of look at that and look at the historical practices out there a little bit more. There is, you know, if one, if one were to understand that, for instance, the flow in and out of the Planned Parenthood facility has staff and clients of the facility coming in on regular intervals that are much tighter than every 30 minutes, which seems reasonable to assume, then the fact that you might have a line of people that would block the driveway in some effective way consecutively for 30 minutes could, in fact, be a violation of the restrictions on the ability to do it because there's a reasonable assumption that the driveway would have been used by individuals who are trying to access the facility, and they're unable to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you. Lots of stuff to dig through on this. So the staff report mentions that there was the protesting group Forty Days of Life, and it's my understanding there are other groups, or at least one other group, that also is there many weekdays throughout the year. Is this correct?
That's our understanding as well, too, and Lieutenant Hibbs can speak to that. They may be more individuals than groups.
Okay. Is that fair? Is that right? Okay.
Individual.
Are extra police patrols currently in existence for, at the Planned Parenthood area on protest days now?
Yes.
Currently, okay. And you'd mentioned about how many altercations there had been that police had been made aware of, I think in ballpark, but do you have an actual number that police have been involved in terms of altercations?
In the last 90 days, there haven't been any.
How about in the last year?
That I don't have.
Okay.
Well, the number that I provide at the beginning, there were 42 incidents that have happened over the last couple of years.
Okay, okay. According to California law, as of September 2021, it's now a crime to intentionally videotape, film, photograph, or record in person within 100 feet of a reproductive health services facility. Has anyone been arrested or warned about this yet?
No.
Sorry, no.
No. Okay, thank you. We've been hearing about, and this, I guess this would be for Steve, we've been hearing about buffer zones created, I'm sorry about this back and forth here, around vaccination clinics to keep, vaccination clinics to keep protesters a certain distance away. How would this differ from something like that?
So at one level, this is more narrowly tailored than the prohibitions associated with the vaccination clinics, the distance requirements under some of the, the restrictions associated with vaccination clinics had a, had a greater distance associated with it than an eight-foot buffer zone. That's one level. There have been challenges to some of the restrictions around vaccination clinics. There's a case out of the Eastern District of California, and so there have been challenges, but the, but the method of imposing the restriction in terms of the scope of it was larger in that instance than what had been upheld as constitutional under some of the reproductive healthcare facility cases.
All right, thank you. Have buffer zones been proved to work as implemented? Have we seen, we saw how these held up, but have they been proven to work?
They have, they have created, you know, additional abilities for people to access facilities. I think that is a question I, you know, if there are representatives here from Planned Parenthood this evening, I think that's, that's an issue that they should speak to as well, too. They would have more experience with that.
Okay. And the last question is specific to this particular Planned Parenthood, which has an interesting configuration. When you, when you walk from the driveway, you go up the ramp, and then you turn 180 degrees and walk back, where you were now just a few feet from the sidewalk, maybe you're six feet up, something like that. So in this instance, where we're talking about the radius of a general 100 feet from within the Planned Parenthood, would that start at the entrance? I guess, how would that work configuring for this particular building?
Right, so the diagrams that we showed, the radius diagrams that we showed you were 100 feet from the entrance to the facility.
Okay, great, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, and I had a few as well. How would a, if a, under a buffer ordinance scenario, how would someone know they were within the 100-foot zone? They wouldn't have the benefit of your diagram showing the blue lines. Would there be signage, or how would that be communicated?
Yeah, there could be signage in the area. There's already, as I understand, there's signage on the site for no trespassing. There could be signage in the area. It's also a matter, when you, when you create those kind of defined areas, it also assists the Police Department in terms of enforceability because they understand the area where the law applies. But we could, we could also have signage out there. We'd have to think about, you know, which areas are publicly owned and where we could put signage in that area, if that is possible.
Maybe you can expand on that, the enforceability aspect of a buffer ordinance compared to existing laws, just generally, or maybe Lieutenant Hibbs wants to talk about that.
Well, so I can, I can talk to it generally, and I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Hibbs to talk about it more specifically from an actual incident, if you will, perspective. One of the, you know, one positive aspect of a buffer zone ordinance, if you will, is it does set very defined parameters, and so from a law enforcement standpoint, it's very clear to the Police Department where they can enforce and where it's beyond that. It's also easier for them to kind of identify what they think is an eight-foot radius around an individual rather than if you extend that out even further. I don't know, Lieutenant, if you want to speak to whether having that kind of, sorry, I need to stay on mic, if you want to speak to whether having that kind of specific guidance helps officers in terms of their ability to enforce them, any further than what I may have said?
Yes, that would, that would help, certainly, but in reference to your question about the difference between the enforceability of the two different types, if it's a penal code violation, then that would be easier for us to enforce simply because it's not something we have to enview.
Okay. And I thought the penal code was something, then, that a citizen could communicate to you after the fact. You could investigate. If it merited a report, you would prepare a report and then pass that on to the DA's office for potential enforcement?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I think back to Steve on some con law questions. So to be constitutional, any kind of buffer ordinance would have to apply irrespective of which side of an issue you're on, whether you're pro-life or pro-choice, whatever message you're trying to communicate would be, would be covered by a buffer ordinance?
That is correct. The Supreme Court's been very clear about that, and there was actually dialogue among some of the justices and some of the courts about, and in their opinions about, this issue of whether the, whether a protester is either pro-choice, pro-life, in terms of their approaches. The ordinance would have to be both applicable to all forms of protest, and it has to be equally applied, has to be fairly applied. That was actually part of the problem with the Oakland ordinance, was that the courts found that it was not equally applied to both sides.
I see. And then on the narrowly tailored prong, are you aware in your research of any other ordinance besides this eight-foot bubble ordinance that's more narrowly tailored to achieve a government's interest in ensuring access to a reproductive clinic, safe passage on a sidewalk, public safety? Did you come across any other ordinance that was more narrowly tailored than this type of ordinance?
We did not in terms of an ordinance that had been tested in court, and so there may be other ordinances out there that we just have not found. We did do a pretty extensive review of various ordinances, and we haven't found any others. There are, you know, the courts have upheld an eight-foot buffer zone within the context of 100-foot radius. It is conceivable, if you assume that the courts would continue to uphold that, that you could have a somewhat narrower definition of that, so maybe a 90-foot radius or a 7, 80-foot radius or something like that. But that is something that you have to, you know, I think from the perspective of what the city is trying to address here, you would want to understand that in the context of how the facility in Walnut Creek is actually laid out and what is really the most effective radius that you would want the law to apply into. As you can see from those diagrams, it's not going substantially off the site as it is right now. It does get onto the street, though, and it crosses the street.
And the way you described harassing, or how harassing might be defined in a potential ordinance, it wouldn't apply to someone who was silently praying on the sidewalk?
That is correct as long as, I mean, if they're, if they're standing in one place silently... praying, not trying to come within eight feet of somebody else themselves, then yes, that is correct.
I think those are all my questions for now. I know we have a lot of public comment on this. We will have, I'm sorry, council member Haskins.
Thank you. I'm clear now that the protesters can't take photographs of the potential patients. Is there any consequence to the patients if they take photographs of the protesters?
Not. So, if the protesters are not, you know, not trying to utilize the facility, because again, it's not whether you're a protester or not, it's really whether you're trying to utilize the facility. And so, to the extent that anyone is trying to utilize the facility, the limitation applies in both ways. But in general, if the protester is not trying to do it, there is not a restriction on folks taking a picture of people who are otherwise within a public area with no expectation of privacy.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Counsel, are you feeling, would anyone like a break, or should we proceed on to public comment?
Whatever.
Okay, then we'll proceed. So, we are moving on to the public comment period, and folks that are here in person, you can please line up at the lectern. And do we have speaker cards? Thank you. And if you can, please maintain some sort of appropriate distance. We would appreciate that. And any of the members of the public that would like to provide public comments online, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. For those who desire to provide public comment, please raise your hand now if you're on Zoom. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will be cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. And maybe if we can just have, let's just have three or four people line up at a time. I promise, I'm not going to cut this off so that anybody, anybody who wants to speak is going to speak on this. I will not do that. So, you can go ahead and remain seated until I call, you know, call up three more speakers. Okay. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. Also, please note that during public hearings and consideration items, groups' spokespersons are allotted 10 minutes in lieu of other members of the group speaking on the item. We trust that everyone will follow the rules. At this time, I will ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments, but we're going to pause on that and accept in-person public comments prior to any remote public comments. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Karen Goldberg. I live in Walnut Creek and have been a patient escort for our Planned Parenthood Health Center. I'm here tonight to help highlight some of the serious safety issues protesters are creating around Planned Parenthood's Walnut Creek Clinic. For one, protesters occupy all space on the sidewalk next to the driveway entrance into the clinic. They set up chairs, bring baby strollers, wave signs, and force their propaganda on anyone and everyone walking on the sidewalk. There aren't many parking spaces in the Planned Parenthood parking lots, so patients often have to park on the street, and many patients come by public transportation. There are many walk-ins. The only way to avoid being harassed by protesters if you're walking in is by stepping into the street or crossing in the middle of the street. Either way, you run the risk of getting hit by a passing car. It's a busy street. This is dangerous for patients and staff walking to the clinic. In fact, it's dangerous for all sidewalk pedestrians. These are not peaceful protesters. They're aggressive and mean. Whenever I've come for my shift as a patient escort, they yell repeatedly at me that I'm supporting murder and baby killers. They yell the same at Planned Parenthood staff arriving for work. I've also witnessed protesters walking back and forth across the driveway with their inflammatory signs and props, creating a safety hazard for anyone trying to drive in or out of the Planned Parenthood parking lot. The protesters walk right up and stop cars going in or out to hand out their medically inaccurate literature, blocking access, distracting drivers, and creating a serious safety hazard for all. The bottom line is safety. People seeking constitutionally protected healthcare should be able to do so without obstruction or intimidation. Buffer zones have been shown to help protect the safety of patients and staff at reproductive healthcare facilities. I respectfully urge the members of our city council to create and adopt a safety buffer zone outside our Walnut Creek Planned Parenthood Health Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Next speaker.
Hi there. My name's Kim West, and I'm a clinic escort at the Walnut Creek Planned Parenthood Clinic, and I would like to add my voice to the requests that you implement and enforce a buffer zone at all women's health clinics in Walnut Creek. A buffer zone that begins at the edge of the property versus the front door. I stand with my peer escorts who have spoken in several council meetings before and who you've heard just now and who you'll hear afterwards about the harassment and interference that occurs outside the Planned Parenthood clinic when people, mostly women, arrive and exit the clinic. I would like to point out that this harassment is perpetuated by anti-choice protesters who are at the clinic on a regular basis, not just the Forty Days for Life. It's the ones that are there twice a week, every week. In fact, the regular protests, it's the regular protesters, and many of them are here tonight, who heap the most aggressive and vile language on patients. You may hear that they claim to be protesters and are there to provide options to women. I can attest that this is false. Using megaphones to shout degrading, misogynistic, and racial slurs at patients, the men who come to escort them, and the people who drop them off and help them with care afterwards, and all the employees and volunteers of the clinic. We've been compared to Nazis overseeing death camps. We've been compared to being members of the Ku Klux Klan. They take video recordings of everyone in the vicinity and forcefully, and forcefully medically inaccurate information. This is not providing options to women. Protesters are creating a dangerous environment around the health center, and it's very, very emotionally explosive for some people. I would like to add that for more than five years, I was a clinic escort at the Planned Parenthood San Francisco Clinic in Eddy Street several years back, and I was there when the city instituted their buffer zone, and I saw firsthand the difference that buffer zone made on how it helped to improve the safety and security of the people coming into the clinic.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Can I ask a question?
Mayor Proton Silva has a question.
Could you tell me if it worked in San Francisco, please?
It did. It provided distance so that the de-escalation of the emotions and the intensity of the emotions, it just provided a further distance for some breathing room.
How was the distance enforced? Because I'm not, I'm hearing some conundrums in the explanation of how this could work.
What I experienced at the clinic in San Francisco is when the ordinance was passed, it was known, and the protesters were respectful of it. In fact, they put tape on the sidewalks so that they made sure that they weren't violating it, and anybody that was pushing it, the clinic escorts, would remind them respectfully, hey, you're inside the buffer zone. And usually, they self-regulated because they didn't want escorts or staff of the clinic to call the police on them. There were times when we had to do that, and they were warned, but that was how we managed it.
Okay. Thank you very much for the additional information.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. West. Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Tammy Chakowsky. I recently moved to Walnut Creek. I also work at Walnut Creek Intermediate School. I've been a Planned Parenthood volunteer for a little over two years. I'm here to request the council institute a 100-foot barrier around the property. I also would like you to consider language that says prohibit certain shouting and amplified sound on any public street or sidewalk within 100 feet. I think the major problem is not necessarily getting in and out of the building, but the harassment and the things that they say to the clients as they're trying to enter the building. If they were merely silently praying, none of us would be here right now. So, please consider a 100-foot barrier around the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chakowsky. Next speaker.
Oh, okay. I didn't do this.
You could fill it out afterward, sir.
Thank you. Don Blythe from Stockton. Our clients denied access to the Planned Parenthood. No. Do we get within eight feet of clients right now? No. All the clients for the past five years I've been out there go right in their cars. We don't get within eight feet other than offering the literature to the car. We're not near the clients. They go into the building, and the upstairs into the entrance is a lot more than six feet from the sidewalk. There is no law prohibiting filming. There is no law, that law does not say, and I've appreciated your attorney, I think he's done a great job. I'm impressed with the presentation, but there is no law that says we cannot film. We filmed to protect ourselves from many of the false accusations that were being exhibited by some of these people from the other side. Have any laws been broken? None of our team will break the law, and none of the people on our team will ever go on the property, the private property. Have alternatives been tried, which is what the courts require, and the answer's no. There are cameras that Planned Parenthood has on the building. If we've been violating laws, why haven't they given that to the police to show the laws being violated? The officer that's out there, retired officer that's out there, has not observed any laws being broken, nor have we approached people going into the clinic within eight feet because they go into the parking lot. They're 20, 30 feet from us when they drive in.
Thank you, Mr. Blythe.
I appreciate your time.
You bet. Next speaker.
Council mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. My name's Alexander Michael Chalko. I've been living in Walnut Creek since 1988. I went to Walnut Acres, Foothill, and Northgate. I just came to realize what an ugly place, what a beautiful town I grew up in and had such an ugly place. You know, it's got a massage parlor, and it's got a killing babies business there. It just really breaks my heart. I'm coming here just to pretty much just let you guys know, you know, we try to love on people and just let them know that what they're doing is wrong. It hurts me. I'm a young grandfather of three grandkids. See this stuff, it's very demonic. It bothers me as a man, as a father, as a grandfather, and I just plead, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to push the Lord on you guys, but I just ask you guys to please just hear us, and if you guys could watch us and see what we do, we just want to love on folks and just let them know that, you know, we are in the United States, and we have rights. We can be able to talk to people. I've never seen anybody try, you know, to get confronted with people, you know. We just want to love on folks and just let them know there's other options, you know. We want to help them, even if the workers, you know, there's opportunity for workers to do other things than, you know, to empower this Planned Parenthood, you know, and it's just really sad that Walnut Creek's changing so much, stuff that's happening at Target, disluding, and it's just a fallen world, and, you know, we just really need to repent, and we really need to just bring Christ back and just, you know, surrender some things to them, and I just, I'm very honored to be here and talk in front of you guys and just let you guys know that, you know, I really wish that you guys could come out and just see what's really going on out there. And just God bless every single one of you guys. Thank you for listening. Have a great night.
Michael, where did you say you were from?
I grew up in Walnut Creek.
No, where do you live now?
I bought a house in Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chalko. Next speaker.
James Cook. I pastor in Concord, and I go down there every week with my kids, and we go down there. I went down there once just to see what was going on. Had to go back again because of what was going on down there. My comments tonight will deal with the whole premise of this buffer zone issue. The initial launch of this investigation was started by some people that were concerned about women's access, their access to the Planned Parent Facility. This is, that is the concern that was brought to you, and in return, you started a probe into see if there's any violating of anyone's access to this facility. The city council members were down there on multiple days. Police officers were stationed down there to see and observe if there was anything of these overflowing reports that those that were out on the sidewalk were restricting women's access to walk in or drive into this facility. We have heard at the last meeting that there were over 40-plus calls for the police assistance at this address. All that said, Steve Massey's report stated that the police could not observe any of these accusations that have been brought forth, and that patients and staff's access have not been impeded. That is the whole premise of this buffer zone. That is the whole premise of this whole agenda. Of the 42 calls that have been made, I would like to know the citations that were given that nobody pushed charges because there was nothing there, and I would like to add how many people on the sidewalk were ticketed or cited for violations of the law. Since I've been down there with my group, not one of us have been cited. Police have been called, and no one's come up to us. I've been accused of, my girls have been threatened with rape.
Thank you Pastor Cook, if you can just wrap up. I appreciate it.
It doesn't go both ways. I'm saying this is a lopsided issue. It doesn't go both ways right now, and if you guys would just enforce the laws that's on the books, you wouldn't have to spend money on the buffer zone.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Francois, council members, and community. My name is Sharice Kound, and I am a Walnut Creek resident. I'm also an elected member of the Mount Diablo Unified School District School Board, although I am speaking personally this evening. Please direct your staff to draft a buffer zone ordinance. No one should have to run a gauntlet of intimidation and harassment in order to access affordable healthcare. When I was in my 20s, I went to my local Planned Parenthood for affordable reproductive care, and it was the most compassionate, respectful healthcare I've received in my life. But I might not have gone if there had been these kind of protesters on my way in. I'm appalled that our city has let this go on for so long, where a volunteer army of escorts are needed to safely get a patient from her car or the sidewalk to the entrance door. Various efforts have always already been tried over many years. It's time to create a 100-foot buffer zone with an eight-foot bubble as described in your staff report, modeled from Colorado and Oakland, proven to work. Your staff also described why this is still useful even though there is overlap with state law, because, as they said in the report, it will provide protesters and law enforcement officers with more clarity of when and where specific conduct is prohibited. So, please, use the power of your position tonight to ensure clear access to crucial affordable healthcare here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Are there any other members in the chamber that would like to address the council?
I'm O.G. Strogatz, a Planned Parenthood volunteer patient escort for the clinic at 1357 Oakland Boulevard. Please enact an ordinance to establish a protest-free buffer zone around the clinic. My thanks to the city council and the city attorney's office for addressing this important topic. I'll highlight several safety concerns associated with the presence of protesters immediately outside the clinic. They clog the sidewalk on both sides of the clinic parking lot. Pedestrians step into the street to avoid the protesters, creating an obvious safety threat. The protesters loudly, proactively challenge those visiting the clinic, posing questions about private healthcare matters and shouting crude, repeated warnings about their perception of clinic services. Patients and their drivers have told me and other volunteers how troubling they find the protesters' behavior. It is difficult to feel completely safe seeking care under these circumstances. I know several people who refuse to go to the clinic because they feel unsafe having to navigate the protests, so they never show up, regardless of which of the diverse Planned regardless of which of the diverse Planned Parenthood services they need. Using sound amplifying equipment, the protesters direct specific toxic messages to clinic volunteers and staff. One of the protesters loudly abused me verbally right below the northeast entrance to the clinic. He accused me of being complicit in what he described as the clinic's murderous work. He called me a death escort, no different from those who escorted Jews off the transport trains at Auschwitz. And he warned me that my days are numbered. Although I remain fully dedicated to and proud of my support for Planned Parenthood, and I am not afraid. My safety and well-being were being threatened. I will close by noting that as patients and their drivers pull out of the parking lot, protesters often approach the driver to offer printed materials and initiate conversation while the driver attempts to focus on turning into Oakland Boulevard, public safety threatened again.
Thank you, Ms. Strogatz.
Please establish the protest-free buffer zone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hydrone Halt. As a Planned Parenthood patient escort, I have witnessed the presence of Planned Parenthood protesters outside of the Walnut Creek Health Center. These protesters generate safety concerns by blocking the sidewalk, forcing people to step out on the road. And I have to add, it happened to me when I was leaving my shift. They actually blocked me and asked me, and I said, please step out. They told me to step out on the street. It happened to me personally.
Can you repeat what you just said? Can you, you, you turned away from the microphone and I couldn't hear you.
I said, it happened to me personally that when I left Planned Parenthood as a volunteer, when my shift was over, I wanted to go back to my car on the sidewalk and there were two men who blocked from the protesters, who blocked me and said, I have to step out on the street to get around them. So, and that really was terrible, a terrible experience for me. They use megaphones to scream at the patients and intimidate them. And what they said, when somebody else said before, they're going up the stairs. When they use their mi- megaphones, people can still hear them, even if it's kind of far away. These patients are just trying to see a doctor. All of us volunteers support the patient's safe access to quality healthcare. This Planned Parenthood Health Center is one of the very few that accepts Medicaid and remained open during the pandemic. I understand the importance of free speech, but safety is paramount and a buffer zone would help greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, honorable magistrates. My name is Sophia and I live in Brentwood. I addressed the council a few months back when we had an open comment section. And I just wanted to follow up with a few things that I did not address at that time. Number one, I wanted to share with you the truth of God's word. We are not here simply talking about reproductive health. We're talking about life. We're talking about abortion. And I want to share with you Psalm one thirty-nine, verse thirteen. For you formed my inward parts, you knitted me together in my mother's womb. That's God. He did that for each one of us. And Exodus twenty, verse thirteen, it says, "You shall not murder." We know that science backs up these thoughts, that we are knit together in our mother's womb. And if you go to any college campus in this nation, you will find what's known as the science of embryology. That's that three main things are determined at the point of conception. Our gender, the color of our eye and hair, and our complete genetic DNA code that's never been given to anyone else before and never will be given to anyone else again. You are worth defending. I am worth defending. Life is worth defending. When we go out to the sidewalk, we are not doing much of what we are being accused of today. We offer real-life solutions to women who are in crisis, who do not have family members, who most likely have been a victim of foster care and have no maternal parents to take care of them. But we actually walk alongside of women, providing baby showers, providing help with rent, with food, with the monetary issues and needs that they have. Those are the kinds of options that we are offering to women. Planned Parenthood is not offering these options. They are offering death. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, if you don't mind. Thank you for your comments. How do you tell the difference between someone who is seeking an abortion versus someone who is coming to the clinic for other services?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Versus someone who is a staff member or volunteer?
That's a good question. A staff member or volunteer oftentimes will have some type of uniform on. Um, they may be carrying a bag that would have some kind of lunch item in that, in that bag that we're-
So you're profiling.
So I can take clues based on what I visually see each day.
So my first question was, how do you tell the difference? How do you know what a patient, whom you have assumed is a patient and is not a staff member? Um, how do you know what services they're seeking such that-
It's a good question.
It falls into the category that you're concerned about?
Yes, that's a good question. So there are three Planned Parenthoods in our area and Walnut Creek is the only Planned Parenthood in this part of the county, out of Aniok, Concord, and Walnut Creek, that provide surgical abortions. They do those on Tuesdays and Fridays every week. Those are the only two days that they offer surgical abortions in our area. And oftentimes, those are the days that we're going out there. There is no automatic assumption that everyone there is going for an abortion because there are other services that are being offered. But we may ask that question, are you here for pregnancy today? And that will lead to a conversation. Does that make sense?
Well, of course it makes sense, but the other, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi. My name's Dory. Um, I'd like to read, um, Jeremiah one, five. Before I formed thee in the belly, I knew thee. So before each of us were formed in our mother, God knew us. Everything that has been discussed here tonight takes people and caring for people. All the things about recycling, all the things about saving food and distributing it, it, it takes people. And so, when you consider having a buffer zone to help eliminate people, what good are we without people? It takes courage to stand for the lives of others. I ask you to not implement the buffer zone and stand for the lives of others. How can you really expect young people to care about destroying property and care about others when the adults they look up to are supporting and encouraging the lives, encouraging, taking the lives of the most innocent? When you think about the, the, the young people you were talking about destroying property, how, how can they care about property if they're being taught that lives don't matter? The most innocent lives among us don't matter. These innocent lives are children in their mother's womb. This is the most, abortion is the most horrendous form of child abuse. Does Walnut Creek support child abuse? In some cases, these children are dismembered limb by limb and crushing the, the child's skull. We are here because someone supported our mothers who gave us life. As a city council and a community, we have the opportunity to support individuals, offering help as well as, as well as the moms and dads that are in need of help and support.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers in the chamber, would, would they like to address the council? Now would be the time. Okay, I am, got one. We know who you are.
Hello. I just want to say that, you know, you're, you're trying to decide how you can keep everybody safe and still use their First Amendment rights. And I don't think that having a buffer zone is going to, uh, prevent a group of people from expressing their First Amendment rights, uh, uh, or being out there to offer a flyer or if somebody is wanting to hear what they have to say. I think it's, there's a, there's a fine line, you know, but harassment cannot be tolerated. People are going through, uh, you have no, no, you, you don't know anybody's background and what they've been through growing up. You know nothing about these peoples and you're making a lot of assumptions. So I just, uh, want to say I support the buffer zone.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warren. I, we, I'm going to turn it over to Zoom now. We have some speakers lined up to speak and I'd like to, if we can, bring in, uh, first speaker, Gilda Gonzalez.
Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you. I'm Gilda Gonzalez, the CEO of Planned Parenthood in Northern California. Thank you so much for your hearing tonight.
Hold on a second, Ms. Gonzalez. If you could speak a little closer to your microphone, some colleagues are having a hard time hearing you.
Having a hard time. How about that? Is that better?
Speak loudly.
Okay. I have my, uh, volume up as loud as it can go. I'll try it even higher. How about that?
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. So as a reminder, out of the seventeen health centers throughout our twenty-county service area, Walnut Creek is one of the two worst sites for hostile protesting. I find it a little bit ironic tonight how people have, some of the protesters have indicated their goodwill, but if they were so wonderful, we wouldn't be here tonight advocating for the buffer zone. So on behalf of Planned Parenthood in Northern California, staff and the amazing supporters that are there in the chambers tonight, and our sixty-eight hundred Walnut Creek patients, I thank you for exploring this first step of adding more protections for our patients. I would like to seek a commitment from this body to continue to working with us to ensure patient protections going forward. California is a reproductive freedom state and Walnut Creek is a critical location for us to uphold this standard. Our patients deserve a peaceful and safe passage in and out of our facility to receive the care they need and want. We're at a pivotal moment within the reproductive movement with the looming possibility of the Supreme Court overturning Roe versus Wade. If this happens, we could see a three thousand percent increase in patients coming to California for abortion services and other sexual reproductive healthcare. This is why I ask for a commitment to continue working on improving protections for Planned Parenthood patients. With this action, Walnut Creek can be a leader in California, showing other communities how to effectively counteract hostile protesters that use their misguided beliefs to interfere with the rights and personal freedom of our patients. So thank you for standing strong for what is right and just by passing the buffer zone tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Sierra.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, hi, my name's Sierra. I'm a fourth-generation Walnut Creek resident. Um, I'm Mexican and Native American. I was raised Catholic. I went to Los Lomas High, uh, whose campus isn't far from the Planned Parenthood clinic we're discussing. And, um, when I was in high school, um, I had a high school sweetheart and we dated on and off for about three years. And, uh, while he didn't put too much pressure on me to have sex, the societal pressure was there and especially the hormones were there too. Really strong hormones and, you know, I was a straight A student. And even then, you know, you're a teenager. Uh, anyway, my senior year, I was able to get on hormonal birth control, which helped, uh, reduce my extremely painful, sometimes debilitating period cramps. I was seventeen and my boyfriend and I decided to consummate our relationship. Um, it usually takes at least seven days for hormonal birth, birth control to become effective, but we didn't wait because we were young, horny, and stupid. And thankfully, Planned Parenthood saved me. I was able to get the morning after pill, um, from the clinic and thus didn't become another pregnant teenager, unlike a very lovely friend I'd once had, who I eventually lost touch with after she became pregnant at only fourteen years old and dropped out of high school. So I was very luckily, lucky. I had unfettered access to a local Planned Parenthood. I reached out when I needed help and they helped me. They didn't make me feel ashamed. And if there had been a bunch of protesters standing guard outside the clinic back then trying to shame me, even if police were in tow, I might not have been as brave. But thanks to the safety and anonymity Planned Parenthood provided me as a teenager, I graduated with honors, got accepted into the UC of my choice, and then graduated from there. And I'm getting married this year to another UC grad, not to my high school boyfriend. And we look forward to having a family that we can plan for. Uh, yeah, thank you for your time and I stand strongly in favor of establishing a buffer zone for Walnut Creek's Planned Parenthood clinic.
Thank you. And next speaker.
Next speaker is Ghila, G-H-I-L-A.
Hi, Ghila, you're on. Are you unmuted? Maybe we should take the next speaker, Suzy.
So sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm on my phone and I've never done Zoom on my phone before. Um, thank you so much for, um, tackling this issue tonight. I'm just, I'll keep it short and sweet. I know you probably have a lot of people waiting in line. I just want to offer my full support to a buffer zone to offer, uh, men and women both, uh, free and unfettered access to their private medical care. I have been to Planned Parenthood a couple times. Just when I'm reminded that the protesters are there, I hop in and do- I hop in and I give a, I make a donation. Um, and I have been harassed. I'm middle-aged and I can't imagine what it's like to go in as a sixteen-year-old needing care. Anyway, full support of the, uh, buffer zone and thanks so much for tackling this issue.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Adina.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Hi, Adina.
Hi. Um, my name is Adina Zinn and I'm a clinic escort at Planned Parenthood in Walnut Creek and a twenty-year resident of Walnut Creek, as well as a co-founder of Women's March Contra Costa. As an escort, I watch people of all ages, genders, and socioeconomic groups endure aggressive and forceful harassment from anti-choice protesters as they approach Planned Parenthood to receive critically needed healthcare services. And I just want to note that a vast majority of Planned Parenthood clients are not there for abortions. They are there to receive healthcare. You have heard from protesters that they are peaceful, that they are there to provide options to women. I can attest that this is false. Protesters use megaphones to scream their hateful words towards people who are just trying to receive reproductive health services. They take video reporting, recordings of everyone in the vicinity to intimidate people from seeking medical advice. They force their medically inactive- They force their medically inaccurate pamphlets onto people who just want to use the sidewalk. They are abusing their right to free speech and creating a dangerous environment around the health center. A buffer zone is the only proposed solution that will adequately protect these vulnerable individuals. None of the alternative actions provide sufficient protection from these forceful and very vocal protesters. The purpose of government is to protect and provide for its people, and we ask that you prioritize the protection and safety of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Judith F.
Can you hear me?
We can. Hi, Judith.
All right. I'm a retired pediatric nurse from Walnut Creek Kaiser Facility, permanent, and I was a volunteer escort at the Planned Parenthood. I have witnessed many safety violations by protesters. The facility, as you've seen from the picture, is really on a well-trafficked, two-lane street with parked cars on both sides. There are bus stops in front of the facility and across the street, and the protesters mill around the bus stops with their megaphones and their signs, and they attach their signs to the utility poles, which are a violation of the city. There must be some code that says that they can't harass people from the bus stop, or if there isn't, there should be. They park in the parking spaces right next to the driveway, and the city could make it a red zone, so they couldn't park there because that's where they sit with their buggies and chairs, and, and their, and their posters that are offensive. As I went one day to, to do my escort, I was across the street, and a very large man who uses a bullhorn and protests all the time came up to me as I was trying to cross the street and said, "I know who you are," and started to talk about my intentions of killing babies and that kind of thing. This, I also volunteer at a probation facility in Contra Costa, and my family was concerned that...
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Deborah C.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for, for discussing this issue with us tonight. I have to say that I am absolutely outraged and shocked by what I've been hearing from escorts and employees at the Planned Parenthood Center. It's outrageous, the behaviors that they've been describing, and the horrible things that the protesters have been saying and doing to the patients who are simply trying to get medical care. I think it's very important to remember that Planned Parenthood is a medical facility. It's for men and women, and they do so many other things besides perform abortions. So I, I am absolutely in favor of the buffer zone. I think that it's very important that in Walnut Creek, we protect our, our residents, not only our residents, but anyone else who's coming to Walnut Creek, to one of our facilities in our cities, to get medical treatment. One of the things that was said in, in the presentation by the city staff people tonight, including the police officer, is that a buffer zone would define parameters, and it would really help the police know what the parameters are so that they can help control the situation when it gets out of hand. Clearly, the current laws that are in place are not working, and so a buffer zone would be very helpful. So why not give the buffer zone to help not only the, the police who can, who can do their jobs within the, the zone that's defined, but provide protection for the, the clients who need medical services? The city worker also said that the purpose of a buffer zone, and I quote, "is to assist in the travel of people using the facility." So please, I urge you as city council to create the buffer zone and assist them in using the...
Thank you, Ms. Carbone. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Joanne S.
I can. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Joanne Supersad, and I'm a retired pediatrician and adolescent medicine specialist who's practiced in this area for over 20 years, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. I'm here to support a buffer zone at the Walnut Creek Planned Parenthood clinic, and as you've mentioned, this has been successful with other clinics in California. Over the years, I've referred countless patients to Planned Parenthood clinics with the expectation that these young women and those accompanying them would have safe access to important healthcare that for a variety of reasons, they weren't enabled, they were unable to receive elsewhere. I recognize the right to free speech and protest by those who object to the mission of Planned Parenthood. However, the actions of some, not all, has jeopardized physical access to the clinic, and, as you've heard tonight, may personnel, volunteers, patients, and patients feel threatened. It also has served to, as a form of intimidation for those who are considering trying to get care at the facility, and this care is oftentimes needed in a timely manner. Additionally, protesters have been causing distractions, which at times disrupt traffic and becomes a safety hazard for the general public. I know we've heard that the accident reported was not because of distractions, but I challenge anyone to go past a group of people protesting and not sneak a glance. I'm old enough to perhaps, and perhaps some of you are as well, to have people in our lives for whom the access to the care, type of care offered by Planned Parenthood played a major, was at a, was at a major turning point in their lives, made a difference. I urge the council tonight to work with your city engineers and the stakeholders to create a buffer zone at Planned Parenthood in Walnut Creek. It's in the interest of safety.
Thank you, Ms. Supersad. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Mary Kay.
We can. Welcome.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
You can. Welcome.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me? You can. Welcome.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Maybe turn your volume down, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
So you don't get the feedback.
I, I don't, something, something's going wrong. Something's going wrong here.
Maybe turn off the TV or the volume source that you've got there.
Something's going wrong here. Turn off the TV or the volume. Oh, okay. Okay. Yes. Yes. Sorry.
Restart your time.
Thank you. My name is Mary Kay Melton. I'm 77-years-old. I live here in Walnut Creek, and I can't believe that this whole Planned Parenthood situation and, and women having access to healthcare is still a problem. I protested in the 70s to get women to be able to have free access to whatever healthcare they needed, and I thought the problem was solved, and the fact that we're still having this problem is, is just beyond me. The buffer zone seems to be the minimum that people should have and deserve when they're trying to get access to personal medical care. So there has to be more that can be done against the people that are doing this horrendous harassment, and so I hope that you will proceed accordingly and put in the, the buffer zone as an absolute minimum to protect my daughter, my granddaughters, and everybody else that may need this healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Lori D.
Start video. Hello there.
Sorry. Hello. Good evening. How are you?
I'm very good, thank you. My name is Lori Day. I'm an escort at Planned Parenthood, and it seems to me that the prime point of contact is in the driveway, where the protesters can have access to the patients that are coming in and out, and it is there that we need to take care of this unsafe area. So I don't think a fence would do it because people still need to drive in and out of there, and they stop to look for traffic, and there is the point of time where the protester approaches the car and wants to talk. And sometimes they do have conversations, but that is not the place to have it because it's blocking other cars that can come in and out, and we've watched time after time of near accidents happening because of where the car is. So, and my other point was the bus stop, making sure that that's free and people can come and go from there and not have signs tied to the post. And as harassment, that's a daily thing. I don't know how many times I've heard people saying they're murdering black babies in there, and it's just, it's not pleasant, and it's not loving, and I really appreciate the thought that a buffer zone could help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Gabriella C.
We can. Good evening.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you very much for holding this meeting. I think it's really critical that this buffer zone exists, and I'll tell you what my background is. I used to work in public affairs and communications for the largest affiliate, and I worked in Sacramento in the 90s, and we had to wear bulletproof vests in those days to just go to our offices. That's how bad it was. And it's very critical, though, that people who are just using the clinic for a variety of services, both men and women, so small of a fraction of what Planned Parenthood does is provide abortions. There is so much more that they do. And we used to say, you know, if we did our jobs really well at Planned Parenthood, we would reduce the need for abortions. So that is really what Planned Parenthood is all about, is family planning. And these people that are coming in, they need to feel safe, and it's already a decision, a very proactive decision, I might add, to seek birth control, to seek what they need in regards to family planning, and we need to encourage them. You know, they need to feel comfortable, and having protesters in your face is just not a comfortable situation for them. So I urge the council to please, please institute a buffer zone at the Planned Parenthood here in Walnut Creek. We have a wonderful city of informed citizens, and I would venture to guess that most of them are very supportive of the kind of work that Planned Parenthood does. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. That was our last public speaker, so we're going to close the public comment, and I propose we take a 10-minute break, and we will resume at 9:15 with questions of staff and then consideration and deliberation among the council. and then consideration and deliberation among the council. Okay, welcome back. We are at the city council meeting for January 18th. We just heard public comment on item five and had a staff report. And now if there are any further council questions of staff after the public comment, I would invite those. Mayor Protam Silva, any questions of staff?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Well.
I'm always the one who asks the questions.
I know. That's why I was a little surprised. But pleasantly. So I don't have any further questions either. I thought staff did a very thorough report. There were some, if there were clarifying questions, they were asked when the commentators were at the lectern. So now it's a time for us to provide any direction to staff. I would ask if there are any volunteers among my colleagues who would like to go first. Councilmember Haskew.
This actually is kind of indirectly to staff. I have thought about this mightily, and I have some comments. And with your permission, I will go ahead with my comments.
Please.
Thank you. I'm trying to lean into it. I'm short is part of the problem. I took the oath of office to be on the council three times. In that oath, I promised to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. By attribution, that means I've promised to support and defend the laws of our country and our state. I take those oaths very seriously. The matter before us today is the intersection of where some of the rights and protections of one set of laws appear to conflict with the application and the rights and protections of other laws. One side asserts the freedom of speech. The other side relies on the delivery of a wide range of legally permitted reproductive and other health care services. This conflict has been addressed by many governmental entities, and their proposed solutions have been tested all the way to the highest courts of the land. There seems to me to be a consistency from what I've read and what I've learned that dictate what is allowed, excuse me, and what is appropriate. It would be lovely if both sides paid attention to these rulings and behaved accordingly. We have sufficient commentary on each side. I believe that each side deeply feels that they have a full, complete understanding of the issue. In my observation, the problem is that occasionally one side has misunderstood how to live within the laws that govern situations like this. I listened carefully to what each side said. There was a modicum of finger pointing, but mostly it was straightforward. My problem is that in most cases, the demonstrators said consistently that they stayed within the standards of decorum. The difficulty is those standards were outside the limits of the laws that govern in this situation. Further, many describe their demonstrations as simply praying for the patients using the services of Planned Parenthood. Clearly, this does not happen in all these cases. In my memory from the prior meeting, not from this one, they felt that they did not harass or intimidate anybody. And that's the fact that belies their reports. I even then, in that meeting, felt the intimidation with the messages delivered by the people present at that council meeting. And I'm from New York. I don't intimidate easily. The behavior of some of these demonstrators are not okay, and that needs to stop. From what I've heard today, I believe that there is no reason that any one of you, if you follow the laws of the land, will find it that you cannot do what you want to do, which is to stand outside and live within the limits of the laws. Personally, when I pray for someone who is going through a deep emotional or moral issue, I ask God to guide that person. I know that I don't know God's thinking or what God's purpose was to put that other person in a particular situation. I certainly don't know what guidance that person has already sought from God and what guidance God has given them. Do I always agree with the outcome? Absolutely not. Do I continue to have faith in God and the system? Of course I do. I therefore would encourage us to go forward with an ordinance that sets limits that people here seem to be willing to live by and will not run afoul of anything. And if San Francisco is a good indication, all people will be better off for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Haskew. Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you. Thank you to all the people that came and spoke tonight, that were on Zoom tonight. Thank you also for the people that had come in the previous meeting that got waylaid due to technical difficulties and the prior meetings to that. We've had a lot of people. There's been a lot of emails and much more. Primarily, this is about people's safety, primarily women, since they are the primary patients who use reproductive health clinics for health care services. We heard from dozens of people that are here and received many, many dozens of letters, as well as a petition with 530 signatures. How would anyone feel if people were allowed to accost whenever we went to a doctor's office? We've seen recently this with vaccination clinics that are also under harassment and confrontational protesters. People have the right to seek health services and treatments. In fact, they have a constitutionally protected right to receive health services, which include reproductive health care services. With recent laws being enacted in Texas and Mississippi, protesters in Walnut Creek seem to have become more emboldened and confrontational. In response to what's occurred locally, several of our elected representatives have written in support of protecting women's rights and access to safe health care services, including Congressman DeSaulier, Assemblymember Rebecca Bauer-Kahan, and Supervisor Karen Mitchoff, the latter two, who expressed their support specifically in letters on the record for a buffer zone to protect patients and protesters while allowing both their constitutional rights. Protesters who also have a constitutionally protected right to protest. The difference is one group is trying to exercise their constitutional rights without creating interference. And the other group is trying to exercise their constitutional right to protest while creating interference and trying to prevent the first group in exercising theirs. I went down to Planned Parenthood several times in October, November to witness for myself how close protesters were to patients. Now, while I didn't see any altercation specifically that certainly required any kind of police involvement, we have had multiple altercations, several of which have been witnessed on video and are on the internet now. On October 20, 2020, armed protesters sprayed pepper spray at counter protesters. In June 2021, a fight occurred between protesters and a patient at Planned Parenthood. And in August 21, an accident occurred as a result of what seems to be of a distraction, potentially from protesters at Planned Parenthood. And when I visited the Planned Parenthood site, escorts have told me, just as we heard tonight, of many unpleasant altercations between protesters and patients, some of which we've heard throughout the course of the last several months and years. This is a chronic problem. And police presence has not alleviated the issues. In addition, more police presence, which may not even be any more effective, means that police presence in other needed areas of Walnut Creek, which we certainly need, as we've seen for ourselves in the past several months, would be reduced based on staffing issues. As we've seen in Walnut Creek, police presence to ensure the safety of everyone in Walnut Creek, wherever they are, is important to the general public's safety. Regarding a gate, which I took quite a bit of a look at, I don't believe this would alleviate the problem. And in fact, it could make it worse. It would require a car be stationary for a given amount of time at the driveway while waiting for the gate to open. Seeing how protesters now come up to car windows on both the driver and the passenger side, I can imagine a scenario where this occurs and the car can't move forward for a given amount of time, thereby increasing the anxiety of the occupants of the vehicle. In addition, this would require that patrons of the other businesses, which uses the parking lot, to also wait at the entrance. It would probably hurt the other business and subject their customers to confrontation as well. We've also heard from some protesters, not tonight, but we did previously, who felt their own safety actually was at risk from patients or counter protesters. This being an issue of safety for everyone, it seems that these protesters also would need some distance for protection for themselves. On September 22, 2021, Governor Newsom signed a law which makes it a crime to film people within 100 feet of an abortion clinic for the purpose of intimidation. It's designed to protect the privacy of reproductive services and their patients. It's the law, regardless of what we heard tonight from one of the speakers. I'm in favor of an ordinance that allows for a buffer zone similar to the Colorado state statute, which Oakland and Napa have in large part adopted, that prohibits a person within 100 feet of an entrance to a health care facility from knowingly approaching within eight feet of another person to pass a leaflet, handbill, display a sign, or engage in oral protest, education, or counseling with that person. Eight feet, which seems to be the legally allowed amount, while not a great distance and smaller than I would prefer, is enough to provide the ability for patients who are just trying to exercise their own constitutional right to receive health care services. And at the same time, not infringe on the ability for protesters to also exercise their constitutional right to protest. A buffer zone of appropriate size is in accord with current constitutional laws, California laws, and protects the interests of patients, workers, and protesters.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilk. Councilmember Darling.
Thank you all. And thank you to everybody who came here to talk tonight. This is a difficult issue. I can tell everybody here feels it very deeply. We have here two competing rights, as referenced by Councilmember Haskew. Two competing rights that we need to work to make sure everybody maintains their personal safety. It is our desire to make our town as safe as possible for everybody involved. And with 42 calls for service to the Planned Parenthood clinic, it's obviously we're not meeting that standard here in Walnut Creek. I've looked at the alternatives to doing a buffer zone. I think several of us have talked about the possibility of a fence or a gate. I think that would actually make things worse because of funneling the patients through there. I've looked at the services that Planned Parenthood themselves have provided. They've gone above and beyond hiring a retired law enforcement officer. And increasing our own patrols is something that appears to be a stopgap measure at best. I think what my fellow council members have talked about with a buffer zone would provide very clear parameters so that everybody that is using the clinic and everybody that's protesting at the clinic can remain safe. And that's our primary mission here. So I would be very supportive of directing staff to develop a buffer zone ordinance for our Planned Parenthood.
Mayor Protam Silva.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to those of you who are with us tonight and those of you who may have phoned in or zoomed in through in the virtual world. We're envious that you can do that from home or your office. As my colleagues have said, this is a conundrum because it's an issue where you have two competing sets of rights that are guaranteed constitutionally at the federal level and at the state level. They are, our challenge is to balance those competing rights without weighing in on whether we are pro-choice or pro-life because that is not the issue. The issue is the balancing of the rights to free speech with the balancing of the rights to have access to health care services and to have privacy and protection of your privacy. Your right to free speech extends to the point under the Hill the Hill decision. It is described as you're allowed to have enough distance, which they determined was eight feet, to have a normal conversation that is personal caring consensual. It does not give you a right to step up to a car at which you're going to have to yell through the car with a closed window in order to make your point. It does not give you a right to pull out a bullhorn to make your comments. That's not normal conversation unless you're using a bullhorn in your house. And suffice it to say, I don't think you are. So we have to find the, and clearly what's happened is we can't decide where eight feet is. And so it seems like we need to. so it seems like we need to come to an agreement as to let's do eight feet. But there's a few other things I think we need to do along the way because I also agree that the alternatives, we are not required under the law to make Planned Parenthood implement alternatives that won't work or that will make the situation worse. We are required to demonstrate that we considered it and evaluated it. Utility poles, they are not public property. They are private property. They belong to either AT&amp;T or PG&E. You cannot put things and attach them to utility poles. When you see it out there, you shouldn't do it. Number two, a bus stop. You can't block people getting on and off a bus. That is going to get someone hurt. You're loitering in the driveway. We walk across driveways. We quack across quickly. When I'm walking near, today I was out on a walk, I'm walking across the driveway at a shopping center. I'm not going to stand there and walk back and forth because I'm either going to cause an accident in the road or I'm going to get hurt myself. You don't loiter in a driveway. Bullhorn and amplification is not conversational tone. And so I am supportive of the buffer zone, but I also believe that as prescribed in the Colorado and in Oakland, Napa, and San Francisco. But I also think we have to address what is allowed in terms of amplification, driveways, et cetera, because those are other issues. Those are not 100-foot, eight-foot. That is just common sense, common safety. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I want to start off by thanking everyone for being here tonight, for coming in on Zoom. It's an issue that people care very deeply about, have passions on both sides, and I appreciate and respect the civility that was shown here tonight. So I'm concerned with the 42 calls for service over a 21-month period. That's unacceptable to me. Some of those calls for service involved physical assaults or altercations. That's also unacceptable to me. I think that there need to be clearer lines drawn here, and the buffer ordinance seems to draw those lines in a way that's clear for both those exercising their First Amendment rights and for those accessing the clinic and for law enforcement. And I think that all those players need to understand that. I am a lawyer. I'm not a constitutional lawyer, but I did take constitutional law in law school and read all the cases the city attorney cited. I concurred with his understanding of them. I thought the McCullin case, resulting in a very rare unanimous Supreme Court decision in 2014, I thought was interesting because there the court very clearly said, cited the Hill precedent, cited the eight-foot bubble ordinance as being constitutional, and then noting that Massachusetts went beyond that and did a 35-foot zone, which they found was not constitutional because it didn't allow someone to engage in a normal conversational tone with someone, which is a protected First Amendment right. And they cited the fact that one woman, when the Hill version of the law was in effect, she had had 100, what she called positive interactions with people accessing the clinic in a normal conversational tone. When the 35-foot zone was enacted, she was precluded from exercising that right. That demonstrates to me that this type of law does balance both rights. It does allow for free speech, and it allows for unimpeded access to reproductive health rights, both constitutionally protected rights. I think the buffer ordinance is needed here for public safety, for access to the health clinic, and for obstructions to the sidewalk and the public right of way. And so in light of that, I also am in support. I appreciated too that any type of law enacted by us would be content neutral, would be equally enforced against someone irrespective of what their views were, pro-choice or pro-life. If someone doesn't want to be approached, that person can approach them. And that, based on my review of the law, and the city attorney concurred with this, is this is the most narrowly tailored ordinance that's essentially been reflected in reported case law. So I think that that all factored in my decision-making, and I would be supportive of a buffer ordinance along the lines of Colorado and Oakland.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that staff writes an ordinance that provides an eight-foot buffer zone within the 100-foot area that, based upon everything that we've talked about and brought back, then for us to be able to approve.
I'll second that.
May I ask a question? The city attorney, does that include some of the issues that I raised? They're a little bit outside the eight feet, but a bullhorn issues and all that. So we get some good clarification on what can and can't be done.
Correct. We can include that information in the report that we bring back to the council.
Great, thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Don't believe we have any other items of business. Thank you all for coming tonight. Travel safely home, and we are adjourned.